All right, good evening. We are reconvening from our closed session. There are no items to report, so at this time I will adjourn the special meeting at 6:00 P.M. I will now call to order the Elk Grove City Council's regular meeting. Today is Wednesday, February the 24th, 2021, and it is 6:00 P.M. Clerk.
Thank you, Mayor Singh Allen. Consistent with executive orders N-29-20 and N-35-20 issued by the Governor of the State of California, this meeting will be conducted by teleconference only. The meeting location will be the City Council chamber, but it will not be open to the public. This meeting of the Elk Grove City Council will be replayed on Metro Cable Channel 14 on Friday, February 26 at 1:00 P.M. and Tuesday, March 2 at 9:00 A.M. It is being closed captioned and will be webcast on SACMetroCable.TV. City Council meeting videos are also archived on the city's website at ElkGroveCity.org. For members of the participating audience who may have personal electronic devices, please place them on silent mode during the meeting or on mute when you are not speaking. Elk Grove City Council welcomes, appreciates, and encourages participation in the City Council meeting. City Council requests that you limit your presentation to three minutes per person so that all present will have time to participate. City Council reserves the right to reasonably limit the total time for public comment on any particular Notice Agenda item as it may deem necessary. Pursuant to Resolution Number 2010-24, no individual speaker concerning public comment may address the City Council for more than three minutes. City Clerk will run a speaker timer, and after the first two minutes have passed, a single bell ding, will sound to inform you one minute remains. When the total three-minute time concludes, a series of bells will sound. With that, Mayor, that will take us to the call to order and the roll call. For that roll call, I will start with Councilmember Spees.
Present.
Councilmember Hume.
Here.
Councilmember Soen.
Here.
Vice Mayor Winn.
Here.
And Mayor Singh Allen.
Here. All right, at this moment, we're going to do our Pledge of Allegiance, and I would like to ask everyone to please stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance. And leading us in the pledge will be Councilmember Spees.
Hand over heart, pledge, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, would you please join us for a moment of silence? Thank you. Next item, please. All right, next item we have, go ahead, sorry.
Sorry, just say Section 2 approval of the agenda.
All right. Can we get a motion to approve our agenda?
You move approval.
Second.
Is there a motion in a second?
Many seconds.
And for the roll call vote on the approval of the agenda, Councilmember Spees.
Yes.
Councilmember Hume.
Aye.
Councilmember Soen.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Winn.
Aye.
And Mayor Singh Allen.
Aye.
We have the agenda before us. Section 3 to close session. We have no items under Section 3, so that will advance us to Section 4, our Presentations and Announcements, that first item being 4.1, Proclamation Recognizing February 28, 2021 as Rare Disease Day.
All right, I would like to ask my colleague, Councilmember Hume, to present the proclamation.
Uh, okay. I don't have it pulled up in front of me, so I'll just mention that this item was brought to me by Dan Drydock Shockley, who we remember has been before us before, having had a hereditary colorectal form of cancer and is a survivor and very much a advocate and outspoken person for recognizing hereditary diseases. And this was today, actually, I believe, is the National Rare Disease Day. And so I asked the clerk, I asked you all to put this proclamation together, and I believe, hopefully, we have Drydock on the line to say words better, more eloquently than I have.
All right, do we have Dan on the line?
We do. Dan, you can go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor and the City Council members. I appreciate the opportunity to have my Rare Disease Day proclamation request sponsored. My name is Dan Drydock Shockley. I'm retired U.S. Navy. I served onboard seven different ships in my Navy career. I'm an Operation Desert Storm, Enduring Freedom, an Iraqi Freedom veteran. And on behalf of the National Organization for Rare Disorders, I've asked that the city of Elk Grove designate the 28th of February as Rare Disease Day. And this is a campaign that's not just nationally, it's international. So I have a rare disease, and I've been an advocate for Rare Disease Day for eight years now. So I thank you for the opportunity, and I look forward to collaborating with with the City Council members in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right, we will move on to our next item.
And that next item will be Item 4.2, which is the Chief's Advisory Board Annual Update. And for this item, I'm just gonna do a screen share to pull up a video that was submitted by the CAB.
Hello, and thank you. We are here on behalf of the Elk Grove Police Department's Chief of Community Advisory Board, and this is our presentation to the Elk Grove City Council. I'm Shirley Lewis. I've been a business owner in Elk Grove for the past 20 years and currently operate a company called Visions In Motion. Our company teaches independent living skills to adults with developmental disabilities such as autism and Down Syndrome. We are in District 2, represented by Councilman Hume and in patrol police fire.
Hi, I'm Sheldon Fields, and I've been a resident of Elk Grove for 16 years. I'm also the newest member of the Chief's Community Advisory Board and a retired firefighter. I reside in Beat Tree and in Council District 3 with Councilmember Kevin T.
Thanks, Sheldon. I'm Todd Blumstein. I've lived in Elk Grove since 1986, graduated from Elk Grove High School, and have raised my family here in the city of Elk Grove. I also reside in Beat Tree and Councilmember Spees's district.
Thanks, Todd. My name is Stephanie Zayu, and I have lived in the rural area of Elk Grove for the past nine years. I'm in Beat Tree, and my council member is Pat Hume. Since last coming before the City Council in June of 2019, loss has happened with the CAB, the Community Advisory Board, the city, and the world. We have a new police chief, Steve Albright, and Assistant Chief of Police Bobby Davis, a new mayor, congratulations, Mayor Singh Allen. Sheldon Fields joined the CAB in August of 2019, and two of our CAB members moved out of Elk Grove, so they are no longer on the board. We thank them for their service and wish them luck in their new homes. As a reminder, the CAB was created to act as a resource for the chief in his formation of strategies, development of community policing concepts, and increasing public awareness. The board is intended to provide a forum of discussion concerning community concerns, and the goal is to have a broad spectrum of viewpoints represented. The CAB first met in May of 2018 and has met monthly since. You can learn more about the CAB's mission, purpose, members, as well as view past meeting notes on the CAB's page found on the Elk Grove Police Department's website.
So, as Stephanie mentioned, much has happened since our last council meeting. We've met 14 times as a board, except in April as we were dealing with the beginning of the pandemic and in November due to scheduling conflicts during the election. Due to safety precautions, our monthly meetings moved online via Zoom. Like so many others in our community, we learned how to both navigate and work in that environment. But we do feel fortunate that even though we were unable to meet in person, the virtual meetings still provided us with an opportunity to receive updates from the police department, to ask questions to clarify notable police activities, let us share our thoughts and concerns directly to the chief. The CAB is diverse ethnically, geographically, gender-wise, and philosophically, so our discussions are always robust, interesting, and informative for all. As an ongoing effort to introduce and engage the CAB within the community, several members recorded introductions of themselves to be shared on the police department's social media platform. Some of the agenda items that the chief presented to the CAB this past year include: Information on the recruitment process for the new assistant chief; Presentations from public information officers, which included lists of upcoming community engagement and youth outreach opportunities; Updates and information during the shelter in place on police and office staffing, patrols, enforcement, and other department news; The increase in impact of COVID on the city's homeless population; Continued current updates on police department promotions; Information on the Great Place Program; And a discussion regarding how many officers arrive on a theme and why. One of the primary goals of the CAB is to continue to be a source that can be utilized by the chief to discuss and disseminate information that would be of interest to the community in both an engaging and more personal manner.
And some items brought up for discussion by CAB members included: Youth outreach within the community; CAB member succession; Homelessness, especially with the impact of COVID-19; Increased fireworks activity and response; Explanation of how citizen complaints are filed against officers and the administrative steps involved in investigating the complaints; How do we involve local businesses to improve relationships between law enforcement and the Elk Grove community; What the meaning of "defund the police" means to our department; Asking the question if Elk Grove is seeing an increase in human sex trafficking and/or bro houses; And as civilians, how we can help bridge the gap between the public the public and the police for safer police encounters. And such efforts would include social media posts of videos, flyers, and PSAs. During this unprecedented year, a lot of questions related to the city's homeless population, which has increased since COVID-19. Additionally, the CAB spent a lot of time discussing the role of the city's police department during COVID-19.
I have found the information shared during our meetings not only personally helpful, but it allows me to go back to my community and share what I have learned. It empowers me to educate my community on how the Elk Grove Police Department works, its priorities, and its aspirations. Because of my involvement on the CAB, I have met wonderfully engaged Elk Groveans, have an increased respect for our police department and its leadership, and can have honest and sometimes difficult discussions with my community because of what I have learned from the chief and those who were on the CAB. In the coming years, we look forward to being done with COVID so we can once again conduct our meeting in person and join the Elk Grove Police Department at events such as Promotions and National Night Out. I hope you all have a prosperous and healthy 2021. And I'd like to leave you with a quote from Margaret Mead. Never doubt that a small group of thoughtful, committed citizens can change the world. Indeed, it's the only thing that ever has. Thank you.
Excellent report. I just want to commend CAB personally, and then, of course, recognize you, Chief, for your great work and engaging our community and creating these great ambassadors. I know several of the CAB members and really, really proud of the great work that you've all accomplished together. Any of my colleagues want to make any comments?
Yes, Mayor, Councilmember Soen. I also just want to echo that sentiment, Chief. Thanks for carrying on the CAB. I think it's a great way for our police department to engage the community, and I want to thank all the CAB members for their for their service. I recognize a couple on there myself. It's been a while. So it's great to see so many familiar faces. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Ditto.
Ditto times two.
I've got a short one. You know, I want to say to the CAB and, of course, to you, Chief, as well, I'm really glad that there is a venue where we can have difficult conversations about the things that go on, not just here, but across the world, in the United States. It's nice that we have a place where we can have those conversations and be respectful of each other, allow each other to be awkward, right? And to have those conversations, which sometimes it's just difficult to do. So, thank you for, thank you for the service of the CAB, and thank you for your cheer.
Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Councilmembers. I thank you so much. I know the CAB members are signed on tonight, and I know your comments are incredibly meaningful for them. They've worked tirelessly through this time. They have some amazing initiatives that we were looking forward to carrying out, that we're getting ready to reengage with, so we're certainly looking forward to 2021. And I know I speak for all of them when I thank you so much for your support.
Thank you. With that, we will move on to our next item.
And that next item will be Section 5, our public comment. Participating members of the viewing audience may comment on an item, not on the agenda, that is of interest to the public within the subject matter jurisdiction of the City Council. Each person will be allowed three minutes or less. A large number of requests are received on a particular subject. City Council cannot take action on non-agendized items raised under public comment until the matter has been specifically included on an agenda as an action item. Members of the public desiring a response to a specific question are encouraged to contact any member of the council or the city manager at any time. Those audience members who wish to address specific agendized items are encouraged to offer their public comments during consideration of that item. And Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Councilmembers, we do have four callers that are signed up under General Public Comment, and also two written comments were received and circulated around to the full City Council and staff, and staff will be pulling those callers into our meeting environment.
Caller, you may go ahead. You have three minutes.
Thank you. The year 2021 has started off with many challenges, and it's surge in violence against Asians, leaving our community feeling unsettled and unsafe. Let me remind you of some of the incidents right here at home in Elk Grove. The Hmong culture and community was attacked by Bobby Singh Allen. A Hmong mayor was told to denounce his own culture and his own identity by Jacqueline Moreno. A white man drove his silver Mercedes into a group of Asian-Americans protesting at the Barbara Blackford Community Center, and racist remarks were sprayed across Umai Bar and Grill. Our Asian-American community right here at home is hurting, and all of you have failed to address this problem. Each and every time when public comments come around, you brush us off and tune us out, and then you go out and tell the people in the public you are so sick and tired of hearing our voices because we are giving you headaches. Well, let me tell you something about being a leader. As a leader, you listen to your constituents, you reach out to them to assure them that you hear them and that you are willing to help. None of you have done so. And because the little birdie has told me that the reason why you have not reached out to any of the callers who have been calling in in the last month is because you don't have their information, well, there's no more excuse for you. My phone number is (530) 392-2187, and I'm gonna be waiting for your phone calls. Oh, and Mr. Hobbs, as a city attorney, your job is to look out for the best interests of the city, not individuals. I suggest that you, being a city attorney, you start putting your elected officials and police department in check. They seem to be rocking a lot of boats these days. The public will be looking into the, and I assure you, the public will be looking into into the censuring of the Elk Grove mayor and a recall against the Elk Grove current, Elk Grove current mayor after actions while on the school board and while in her mayor's seat is questionable since her 90-day is coming up. And maybe it's time to start looking at filing a grand jury against, grand jury complaint against the Elk Grove Police Department for violations of policies and protocols. Have a good night.
Thank you for calling. Next caller, please.
You didn't do me a sec, though.
Caller, you may go ahead. You have three minutes.
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor and City Councilmembers. I'm Jan Smalley Jones, Stone Lake resident and a member of the NEST. I'm here tonight to commend the Elk Grove Planning Commission and the decision not to weaken the existing general plan, which would have allowed CNU to build an essential health care facility in a 200-year floodplain. Post Hurricane Katrina, California enacted SB 5 to basically reduce the amount of risk associated with flooding. The current general plan is compliance with that law and, as staff had indicated to the Planning Commission. So, the, this essentially, this, the general plan states directly that the, that the city won't locate or encourage other agencies to locate essential healthcare facilities in the, in the floodplain. The prohibition has been in place since 2016. CNU knew or should have known with due diligence that Stone Lake Landing, which they purchased, was in this prohibited zone. They do not have a property right or entitlement to build a facility and a vulnerable, bring a vulnerable population into the floodplain. So, you know, elevating the site does not remove the flood hazard, given the fact that the streets around it will be inundated, making it impossible to access the hospital or remove vulnerable population from it. While CNU indicated that it will shelter in place, there's no evidence that, in fact, they can do that. So, one of the main purposes of the current standard is to minimize the needs for rescue and relief efforts associated with flooding, generally undertaken at the expense of general public. The city should not undertake that risk on the part of CNU. As stated in a document we'll talk about later tonight, the Laguna West Lakeside and the Stone Lake neighborhood, given our location close to the Sacramento River, is at increased risk from major storm events and levee breaches. The July 19 staff report on levees indicates there is such a risk along six to nine miles of SAC River Levee. And we'll have to work as a community long-term to resolve this. However, in the meantime, we should, it would be insane to put a hospital in this location. So I assume they will appeal this to the council. I would hope and certainly expect the council to support the rational decision that was made by the Planning Commission. I thank you for your consideration.
Thank you for calling. Next caller, please.
Caller, you may go ahead. You have three minutes.
In response to hate crimes targeting the Asian-American communities, advocacy groups have come together to document cases of harassment and violence. Stop API Hate was the 2,800th sport in 2020, many of which were physical assaults. Last summer, Bobby targeted the Hmong community and mischaracterized it with labels. She would not have their place on any other ethnic group. She enlisted the help of a local online newspaper editor and friend who went around social media harassing thousands of Hmong people online. And in September, her close friend, who she described as being like a brother to her, was seen yelling anti-Asian sentiments at a crowd of Hmong protesters right before using his vehicle to drive aggressively onto a walkway where elderly Hmong women and an eight-year-old boy stood. This anti-Asian violence has continued into the new year. In San Francisco, an 84-year-old high man died after being assaulted on the street. In Oakland, a 91-year-old man was shoved to the ground. In here in Elk Grove, an Asian-owned restaurant was vandalized. Most recently, two Asian-American women were attacked and robbed outside their home. Some of these cases have made it to national news, but most have not. The low profile of this wave of violence is a reminder of how racial violence goes unexamined when it doesn't fit neatly into the standard narrative of race in America. This recent onslaught of anti-Asian violence reveals something about how this country thinks about racial calculus based on damage and hierarchy. Asian-Americans exist in a weird but convenient space in American politics and culture. We're ignored by the left until they can figure out how to exploit us, and the right just ignores us altogether. There is something very wrong with the way Americans think about who deserves social justice, as though attention to non-white groups, their histories and conditions is only as pressing as the injuries that they've suffered. We saw this during a September school board meeting when Bobby addressed her racism against the Hmong community by telling us that our experiences were not important enough and to stop talking about it. During a press conference, Bobby told us that our anger with her racial attacks and our culture was a mockery of real victims of racism. We saw this again when all four City Council members overlooked the racism as a mayoral candidate and endorsed her. And again, we saw this when other politicians throughout the state threw their hand in the ring for Bobby despite her anti-Asian racism. It wasn't until anti-Asian racism began trending on a national level recently that some of these politicians finally found the courage to stand up against the hate directive at our community. To these politicians, to all you City Council members, and to you especially, Bobby, who continue to pretend as if you did not just engage in the anti-Asian rhetoric attacking my people, you are a part of a systemic racism that continues to plague America today. Shame on you.
Thank you for calling. Next caller, please.
Caller, you may go ahead. You have three minutes.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Mark Graham, Elk Grove. All right, um, I think that the best preparation that the City Councils can do for when the CNU issue ends up on your agenda is to watch the entire video from the Planning Commission meeting on February 18. Please do that. Now, regarding the first and the third callers, I'm glad the City Council did not stick public comments at the end of the council meeting as at least two council members mentioned about a month ago that you wanted to do. That was a terrible idea. Everybody has a right to speak, and that includes the right to criticize the City Council. Councilmember Spees just said tonight he's glad that we can have difficult or uncomfortable conversations, so don't shy away from it. All right, I sent the council members some slides, and I want to go over this. The city manager should add to the city's website about cell antennas a brief description of two current lawsuits against the Federal Communications Commission. One is by Children's Health Defense, and the other one is by Environmental Health Trust. I wrote to the city manager about a month ago about this. He said, "Please add these things," and he wrote back, and he said, "Okay, sure." Soon as the website is back up. And then he wrote back, and he said, and this is the next slide that I sent you. Oh, jeez, now there's feedback. He wrote back, and he said, "We do not plan language regarding the litigation you referenced at this time, since the matter is still being adjudicated." Please take a look at that slide I sent it to you. The third slide is a screenshot from the city's website, July 3 last year. And that website on cell antennas, and that webpage specifically mentioned litigation that was currently pending against the Federal Communications Commission. It was City of San Jose versus FCC. So, when the city manager says, "We're not gonna put those Children's Health Defense and Environmental Health Trust lawsuits against the FCC up on the city's website because they're currently pending," that is nonsense. You know, the city needs to do a better job of being transparent, providing information. And this is where to start. Council, please provide direction tonight to the city manager to do that also. As I mentioned in my fourth slide, the council and the staff should be very excited about these two lawsuits, because there's, I think there's a good chance that the plaintiffs, petitioners are going to win. I listened to the oral argument on January 25, and one of the judges, that's the FCC attorney, "I am inclined to rule against you." Almost all the judge's questions and comments were in favor of the petitioners. Now, if the FCC loses and the petitioners win, it would mean that, at least in the short term, the FCC's radio frequency emission exposure limits are, they're in limbo, but they're no longer acknowledged by the U.S. courts as being legitimate. That's what the lawsuit is about. And this could free the city's hands and open things up significantly. So, this is good news, and you should put it on the city's website. The last thing is, more people in Elk Grove have found out about the cell antennas.
Mr. Graham, your time is up, sir.
All right, well, thank you. Good night.
Thank you. Is that the final for public comment, Mr. Lindgren?
And that is the last of our callers under Section 5 for public comment.
All right, we will move on to the next item then.
And that would be Section 6, General Administration Information.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the City Council. Jason Bearman, City Manager, happy to write this, this report to you this evening. First of all, a reminder, the Council's biennial retreat is tomorrow, February 25, beginning at 9:00 A.M. The meeting will be held exclusively online via Zoom. The meeting will be held exclusively online via Zoom. Evening materials and registration are available on the city's website at elkrovecity.org/retreat. On February 12th, staff released the draft Housing Element and Supplemental Environmental Impact Report. Public comment is being collected through March 29th. A webinar to review the draft Housing Element is scheduled for March 3rd. More information is available on the project website, elkrovecity.org/housingelement. The city released a request for proposals aimed at selecting developers to work with the city to develop new affordable housing units. About $8 million will be available to fund two or more projects on sites not currently owned by the city. The RFP was posted on the city's website and circulated to a list of more than 50 affordable housing developers. Staff anticipates receiving multiple proposals. On March 3rd, 2021, from 4:00 to 6:00 PM, Elk Grove Unified School District will be holding a virtual recruitment fair to fill approximately 250 future positions for the 21, 22 school year. The city of Elk Grove will be supporting this effort by joining the event with a virtual booth, provide candidates information about living and working in Elk Grove. The virtual event will include a lobby, webinars, exhibit hall, and other exciting features. If you'd like more information about the event, please visit egusd.net. District 56 continues to offer opportunities to eat and shop local during the pandemic. March will bring the return of weekly neighborhood markets each Thursday from 4:00 to 7:00 PM. And SACtoMoho's Dinners to Go Event will also be moved to a weekly format each Wednesday from 4:00 to 7:00 PM, beginning March 3rd. Look for the promotion of these activities on the city's social media channels. Zee Elk Grove, in partnership with Explore Elk Grove and the Elk Grove Chamber of Commerce, is building an online savings pass as part of the next phase of our Y by Local campaign. Interested businesses that want to be featured on the savings paths can join this marketing platform at no cost. Details about this program are available through our Economic Development Department by calling 916-627-3338 or emailing econdev@elkrovecity.org. The Gardens at Quell Run, a new 96-unit affordable housing complex at the corner of Bruceville Road and Quell Run Lane, is anticipated to be completed in April. The leasing process is kicking off for the lottery, and people selected in the lottery will be invited to apply for a chance to live in one of the new apartments. Rents will be in the $500 to $1,300 a month range, and the property will serve households making 60% or less of the area median income, or around $52,000 for a family of four. Residents get into the lottery by selecting the link on the Gardens at Quell Run, posting on the city's Facebook and Twitter pages. The lottery closes on March 3rd. And then a few COVID-19 updates, a lot of activity here at the state and the federal level. Yesterday, Governor Newsom signed a COVID-19 stimulus package worth $7.6 billion in economic stimulus measures meant to provide needed relief to individuals, families, and businesses suffering the most during this pandemic. Some of the key provisions that impact the residents include $600 direct payments for about 5.7 million people statewide, including those with incomes below $30,000, as well as those excluded from previous federal stimulus payments. Really important, really, for small businesses, grants of up to $25,000 for businesses impacted by the pandemic, and $50 million allocated for nonprofit cultural institutions. There's also fee waivers for most impacted businesses. Two years of fee relief for roughly 59,000 restaurants and bars statewide licensed through the state's Department of Alcohol Beverage Control that can range annually from $455 to $1,235. Legislation will also include relief for more than 600,000 barbering cosmetology individuals and businesses licensed through the Department of Consumer Affairs. More information about these and other parts of the package can be found at www.gov.ca.gov. On Monday, on the federal level, Monday, the House Budget Committee passed the COVID Relief Package, American Rescue Plan Act. This legislation contains $350 billion in direct aid to states and localities, which can be used to offset revenue loss, among other things. The full House is expected to vote on the package at the end of this week, but possibly over the weekend, assuming House package, that will then head to the US Senate. On a vaccine note, Sacramento County Public Health officials expanded the list of people now eligible to receive the COVID-19 vaccine. Individuals employed in SAC County who meet one of the criteria below are eligible to schedule an appointment to be vaccinated, including all staff in preschool, elementary, middle, and high schools, all formal and informal childcare workers, including daycare providers, any other workers involved in child and/or student care, including bus drivers, monitors, crosswalks, guards, et cetera, all staff and educational support services and administration. Due to limited vaccine supply, colleges, universities, post-secondary education facilities, and technical and trade schools are not yet eligible. Appointments are required. For more information about COVID vaccine distribution or to sign up to receive notifications about future vaccination clinics, visit Sacramento County COVID-19 website. Call 916-875-400 or email covid19vaccine@saccounty.net. Finally, just an update on our great place continues to go well. Right now, it's extended through March 8. A total of $4.4 million has been invested in our local restaurants. Right now, we have 518 seniors and 18 local restaurants participating. And that concludes my report, and I'm happy to answer any questions that council might have.
Excellent report. Mr. Berman, lots of great activities to report. Any questions or comments for our city manager? All right, hearing none, we're accepting it as an excellent report and update, so thank you. With that, we will move on to our next item.
And that'll take us on to Section 7, Council Comments, Reports, and Future Agenda Items.
All right, so we will begin with councilmember Spees.
Okay, thank you. Nothing to report. I do want to let you know, Mayor, that because we have the summit tomorrow, we were going to have the library meeting, the library authority meeting tomorrow, but I let them know that you won't be able to make it either.
Thank you.
Yeah, so that's all I have. Thank you. I'm sorry, one last thing. On Friday, the Elk Grove Food Bank and Dignity Hospital are co-hosting a COVID-19 vaccination drive from 9:00 to 3:00 at the, I just forgot what it's called, Creekside Church. And so, if anyone is interested in getting that, it is now open to those over 65. Please call the Elk Grove Food Bank and get a reservation. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Hume?
Thank you, Mayor. This will be brief. I had the Regional Transit Board meeting Monday evening. Nothing specific to report for Elk Grove, but during the general manager/CEO's report, he did mention that he believes negotiations with Elk Grove regarding annexation are going well. I've had some offline conversations with city staff, and they confirmed that things do seem to be moving in a good direction, and the two parties coming closer together, so that's good. And then this morning, we did not have our regular sanitation district meeting, but we did have the board subcommittee to discuss the replacement of the district engineer and the recruitment to fill that position, and reviewed the recruitment brochure that was put together by the soon-to-be-retiring district engineer. And I have no future agenda items. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Soon?
Thank you, Mayor. We had a SAICOG board meeting, nothing to report there, but we did, as you know, had our second meeting of the Response Recovery Resiliency Task Force. That was pretty informative. There's some information there that the members and stakeholders agree that wasn't being shared out to the community, so I think we found some creative ways to get the word out to folks, our Elk Grove businesses and nonprofits and such there as well. So, that's it. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Vice Mayor Wynn?
Thank you, ma'am. I, let's see, let me try to go in order here. There we go. So, partnered with Dignity Health on providing over 500 COVID vaccines to those that are 65 and over on February 15th. I do want to encourage people to continue to get tested. What they're seeing is that there's a drop, a huge drop in folks getting tested. It's free, it's now done as a self-swab, and there are many locations throughout the county. You can walk in, you can also go by appointments as well, too. In partnership with UC Davis Health, my organization is also offering fresh fruits and veggies every Friday for the next nine Fridays at 3:00 PM, and it's available while supplies last. Want to give a shout out to Bach Fried Chicken and Urban Roots during this time. What they've been doing is providing hot meals to families that have been impacted by COVID. You work with a community-based organization, they'll get ordered for you, and the family can just swing by. I have, I think the city's launched an advancing equity advisory committee to support efforts to root out systemic racism, and I'm happy to share that I've been selected to be a part of that. We'll be tasked with delivering, developing recommendations of the organization's future work and supporting city efforts to advocate equity in their communities. And then I just want to also talk a little bit about, it was talked about a little bit in our public comments, but since the pandemic in 2020, there has been an uptick in hate crimes against Asians. And it was mentioned earlier about the Stop API Hate, the online portal. I know that very well. I've done many incident reports on there. Our API community unfortunately stays silent on things like this, and that's why there continues to be an increase in uptick in hate crimes against Asian, and specifically around the Lunar New Year as well, too, because it is known that around the Lunar New Year is when there's a lot of cash that is around. The Stop API Hate online portal offers it in 13 different languages, and it only takes about seven minutes to complete it. I encourage anybody that is an API that has been a part of any type of hate to go on there and complete it. And it was said early also is that since the middle of March to the end of 2020, there has been over 2,800 hate crime incidents. And for that reason, I'd like to ask the council for support in either, and we can ask the city attorney for this, a proclamation or memorandum in denouncing racism against Asians, against anti-Asian hate, against Asian and Pacific Islander, condemning and combating racism, xenophobia, and intolerance against Asian-Americans and Pacific Islander. We have to do something. There's been so many videos circulating around, and it's happening all over the world. And unless we do something about this, unless we all come together, I don't know that it's ever going to stop. You know, several months ago, and I never shared this, but my parents were in a car accident at a local supermarket, and because they were limited in English, the other person were attacking them and telling them things that they were in the wrong, and so they called me, and I came out there, and because my English, I didn't have an accent, the gal said, step back, I don't want any of your coronavirus, get away from me. And I was just shocked that it would happen to, not that it would happen to me, but, you know, in our own city, that something like this exists. And so, I'd like to see if I can get some council support in either a proclamation or a memorandum, or something that we can do just to denounce this.
So, Vice Mayor Wynn, I have an update on that, so if I can share my report, and it will lend itself to what you're saying as well.
Perfect.
Okay, great. So, I, just to transition more smoothly from Vice Mayor Wynn's comment, myself and councilmember Soon, we've received information from Assemblymember Bonta's office on AV886, and it's called Hate Violence and Victim Support. And I was reached out from the office because Indian-Americans are also Asian-Americans, as we all know, and we see different kinds of hate crimes in different moments in time, and it's very unfortunate. The Indian community, the Sikh community, the Muslim community are part of the eight greater Asian community. We see a rise in hate crimes and violence, including murders and beatings and everything you can think of when you see terror attacks across the world. Unfortunately, we're seeing that uptick now with COVID-19 with our other respective communities everywhere, so it is definitely very unfortunate. So, the ask from the Assemblymember's office is they actually have language for us for consideration? And what I would say is we could sign on to this legislation and adopt some of that language for ourselves. So, I'm definitely in support of what you're saying. Since we have some outreach from our Assemblymember, who's an API leader, for our consideration, maybe we can combine both of those efforts. Does that sound like something that would work, Vice Mayor Wynn?
Yep, that works for me.
Okay. So, can we get some consensus on that one?
Yeah, Mayor, this councilmember Soon, absolutely, I'd agree with that. And councilmember, Vice Mayor Wynn, it's maddening, you know, I remember hearing about what happened to your parents, and it's maddening that would happen here. Even from my own experience, when I was younger, my own grandfather was attacked on Lunar New Year, hit on the head and mugged. Just, this happened in a different country, in Australia, wasn't here, but it was the same thing, and, you know, it's very disheartening to hear that after all these years, you still have these things going on. And so, yeah, I wholeheartedly support both the sentiments that were raised tonight.
Thank you. So, I will share that language with you, Mr. Lindgren, and Mr. Berman, and Mr. Hobbs, probably later this evening or tomorrow. But it's Assembly Bill 886.
That's good.
Okay, and then just for some of my other updates, my councilmember Soon mentioned our Economic Recovery Task Force, which is doing great work. We will have some immediate solutions that we can provide relief probably in the next couple of days. I'm waiting for the co-chairs to send out some of the messaging, but we had an excellent presentation from our executive from SBA, the Small Business Administration and others. So, we will be able to share some of those in real time to provide immediate relief in areas that many of us may not actually be aware of, the different resources. So, that will take place. Vice Mayor Wynn bypassed something that she shepherded a few years ago, and that was recognition for Women's History Month. She led the efforts for the city, and I proudly collaborated with her, the first time we've ever had a Women's History Month recognition. So, we wanted to continue that tradition. Last year, because of COVID, unfortunately, we weren't able to move forward on doing any sort of recognitions, not knowing what life would look like. So, fast forward, what we thought, when all of the great work was seen with our essential workers, particularly women in the field of essential workers on the front lines, we thought that tying in that theme of Women's History Month, but recognizing and honoring our essential workers. So, we are collaborating with Kara and Kristen and coming up with an idea of including the community to essentially nominate a hero, nominate an essential worker to be recognized, and we'll develop a slideshow. So, it's not to be so labor-intensive, but it's a great opportunity for us during Women's History Month to also honor and recognize some phenomenal women in our community that are on the front line. So, we'll have more to share on that, but just wanted to let you know that an effort that the vice mayor started a few years ago, we're going to continue that tradition moving forward. So, I'm very excited about that. That's all I have for my report, so we will move on to the next agenda.
And that'll be Section 8, the Consent Calendar Items. Mayor, Vice Mayor, and councilmembers, for the public comment on this item, we don't have any callers and no written comments were submitted.
All right, so we have opened the public comment opportunity. We're going to be, there's no comments, so I will close the public comment opportunity, and I will ask for a motion to approve our consent calendar.
Motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second?
And for that roll call vote to approve the consent calendar items, I'll be starting with Councilmember Spees.
Yes.
Councilmember Hume?
Aye.
Councilmember Soon?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Wynn?
Aye.
And Mayor Singh Allen?
Aye.
Consent calendar items of Section 8 will pass 5-0. That'll move us on to Section 9, our public hearings, starting with Item 9.1, which was a continued public hearing. Consider the extension of an urgency ordinance imposing a moratorium on the issuance of any new permit, license, or entitlement for any new smoking lounge, smoke shop, or tobacco retailer in the city of Elk Grove.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council. I'm Shane Giller, the Assistant Director of Development Services. I don't have a formal presentation to present this evening, but I'll give you some background on the item. This item's a continued public hearing from the February 10, 2021, meeting, and it considers an extension of an urgency ordinance placing a moratorium on the issuance of new tobacco retailer licenses and use permits for smoking lounges and smoke shops. On March 11, 2020, the city council adopted an urgency interim ordinance originally imposing this moratorium, and on April 8, 2020, the council adopted an urgency ordinance extending the moratorium until March 12, 2021. The city council has the discretion to extend this moratorium one additional time for up to one year. That's the action presented to you this evening, based on council direction from the last meeting. The city council does have additional options available. the last meeting. The City Council does have additional options available. Though the proposed ordinance extends the moratorium for the full year allowed by law, the council could select an expiration date sooner than that. It should be noted that since this is the last extension that state law allows, should you choose a shorter period of time, you do not have the opportunity to then go and extend the moratorium again. And if the council approved the full year extension tonight, but over the course of the next year determines that it would like to resume issuing these tobacco retailer licenses and use permits, the council could direct us to return with an ordinance repealing the moratorium at any time. Also, of course, council could reject the extension before you and allow the moratorium to expire on March twelfth, twenty twenty one. This ordinance does require a four-fifth vote of the council to be adopted. And with that, I'm available for questions.
All right. At this time, I will declare the public hearing open and open the public comment opportunity.
And Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Councilmembers, for Item nine point one, we have eight callers who have requested to be dialed into the meeting, and two written comments were received and circulated around the full city council and staff. And staff will be pulling those callers into the meeting environment now.
Caller, you may go ahead. You have three minutes.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Councilmembers. My name is Marissa Greenband, and I am the Tobacco Control Program Director at East California Sacramento Region. We're a local nonprofit organization that's working towards clean air and healthy lungs in the Sacramento region. I wanted to first thank council for their action in removing the ordinance that was being considered with exemptions to, among others, mentholated tobacco products during the last council meeting. The tobacco industry has historically marketed menthol-flavored tobacco products in communities of color and communities of lower socioeconomic status, driving a further wedge in communities as health disparities increase due to disproportionate tobacco use that resulted from this marketing. Make no mistake, menthol is a youth-friendly flavor, too. And we certainly hope to see council revisit a comprehensive plan for addressing the youth vaping epidemic and the impact of flavored commercial tobacco products in your community soon. But regarding the agenda item considered by council tonight, I just wanted to provide a few points of education. In communities with a greater number of tobacco retailers, there are associated increases in smoking rates among both youth and adults. We know that the tobacco industry spends millions of dollars marketing their addictive and deadly products to your community members in the retail locations in your community. But we also know that restrictions that decrease, or at least prevent, an increase in tobacco retailer density in communities make tobacco products less available, and they decrease community exposure to tobacco advertising, both of which are likely to improve public health. Thank you, and I hope you have a good evening.
Thank you, caller. Next caller, please.
Caller, you may go ahead. You have three minutes.
Hello there. My name is Michael Rebashow. Just calling to give you my opinion. What this ban is doing is hurting businesses in Elk Grove. It is not stopping young people from smoking. I understand we're really trying to help protect our youth, but unfortunately, the ban just doesn't work. What we need to understand is that people are going to get tobacco products even with this ban. They're getting it online, and it's unregulated product. Anybody can get it online, you just need to say you're eighteen. They're getting it from different cities. You can go across the city line and buy products at a different store. And our our city is losing out on all of this revenue. And we're in a pandemic here where people are unemployed. You can get it from out of state. So we are only hurting our own city's economies and small businesses by not selling these products. I believe instead of making our own city laws, we really should be waiting for voters to decide, and we should be finding a better way to protect our young people without hurting our own economy and our own businesses. This is this is just not the solution. We need we need to go into it more and really figure out a better way without hurting our own business, our own economy, and our own people. Thank you very much.
Thank you, caller. Next caller, please.
Caller, you may go ahead. You have three minutes. Caller, are you there?
Hello. Thank you, City Council, for giving me the opportunity to speak. It is a concise messaging right now that the business community, especially in this industry, feels that the city of Elk Grove is really not supporting the business community. They're feeling like all these new information and restrictions are causing their businesses to go out of business. I'm calling because the retailers feel that right now with this moratorium, you're already hurting the right to be able to have businesses that can be existing businesses or adding more businesses in some of these areas. We want the city to know that right now, there's a pandemic going on. Anytime you're adding restrictions and any kinds of bans to any business, it's creating a hardship, and the ripple effect is humongous. We urge the city to please consider that if they're going to do this moratorium, then that's one thing, but to support the existing businesses, the existing smoke shops, and not put any more bans, and instead wait for the voters. It's going to be only a year and a half that the ballot is going to have SB seven ninety-three, in which the voters can vote on what it is that they want. Take this away from the city of Elk Grove and stop hurting businesses. If anything, there's plenty of businesses. We had forty-five speakers last month, and the agenda item got full. And so now, what we're hoping is that, why don't you reach out and do solutions together? Work with the businesses, find out what it is that we can do. For example, put POS system, become the first city that has POS system for twenty-one and over, and create solutions. So all these restrictions are always hurting the business. Let's work together. Let's change the image that the city has against business. Thank you very much.
Thank you, caller. Next caller, please.
Caller, you may go ahead. You have three minutes.
Hi, good evening, members of the City Council. My name is Paul Benner. I'm a local business owner as well as an attorney. I am encouraging the City Council to please rethink this item and rethink the moratorium. This heavily impacts existing business owners as well as new business owners. There are a lot of business owners and families, including mine, that have owned businesses for multiple, multiple years. At the time those businesses were created, there was no competition in the area. And now, you know, with these new laws or new ordinances or moratoriums that you want to enact, they take away the value of the business. Because now, if someone wants to sell their business or transfer it to their family or whatever, you know, if they fall within that thousand feet area, they're not able to transfer their business with that tobacco license anymore. I, you know, obviously, there's nothing positive about tobacco. I completely understand that. But then there's, you know, not positive things about alcohol or positive things about fast food either. So, you know, if the council or the government thinks that by stopping or, you know, not allowing new businesses to come, or stopping existing businesses from selling these products, it's not, that's not the solution. The better solution is for law enforcement to conduct more sting operations. If a retailer, unfortunately, you know, sells to a minor, then yeah, take their license away, penalize them, suspend their license, whatever you guys gotta do. But for those law-abiding business owners that comply with the law, then penalize them for these things. Some other people made some fine, you know, points that you can go online and act like you're twenty-one or whatever and buy these products. So it's not these small shops here, small businesses, gas stations, convenience stores out of the prom. We're trying to, you know, invest in the product industry and, you know, for only adults to buy them. In addition, as far as the sleeve-remand goes, I'd like to say, I think that's something that we should wait for the state's decision on, and then the city can enact what they want in accordance with that. I'd like to have a uniform system during the state law act, rather than different rules in Sacramento, different rules in Elk Grove, and different rules in other counties. Again, I urge the members of the community, the City Council, to please do not pass this moratorium, and it's going to take away from existing businesses. Thank you.
Thank you, caller. Next caller, please.
Caller, you may go ahead. You have three minutes.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and fellow councilmembers. My name is Carol Madam, and I am an Elk Grove resident. In fact, I've been a resident of Elk Grove for twenty-five years. I've seen many changes, some good and bad. But tonight, I'd like to tell you about someone who is near and dear to me, Elizabeth. Elizabeth started smoking at the age of fifteen. She started not because of peer pressure, but because she thought it looked cool in the picture. Elizabeth started smoking menthol cigarettes. She met a good guy and got married when she was twenty-three. She was now a daily smoker, smoking almost a pack a day. Pacman encouraged her and supported her to quit nicotine gum patches, smoking groups, and rules where she was allowed to smoke. She couldn't quit. Jump ahead, and Elizabeth is now twenty-six. She is pregnant with her first child. She tried to quit, she couldn't. The addiction had grabbed her and wouldn't let go. Their baby, Chris, was low birth weight and premature. He experienced all sorts of medical issues due to these factors. Elizabeth didn't have health insurance, and so the emergency room is where Chris got medical care. Jump ahead twenty-five years, Elizabeth is diagnosed with lung cancer. She underwent surgery and all types of treatment, which, of course, she couldn't pay for, thus leading it up to medical. She died within a year and a half of being diagnosed. Chris is a young fifty-two with two children who have just lost their mother and grandma. One more thing, guess what? Chris is also a smoker now. I mention this to you because I want you to know the various impacts of smoking that are very often forgotten. Medical issues that are cofactors for a smoker, high blood pressure, heart disease, diabetes, and the list goes on. Medical issues for children born to smokers, high healthcare costs, increased likelihood of smoking on loved ones around you, again, high healthcare costs, and ultimately premature death. Not to mention the thing that was most devastating to Elizabeth, she started smoking early. In Elk Grove, we need to do something to help our people that cannot help themselves. I ask you tonight to extend the moratorium as a first step, creating a comprehensive smoking ordinance to help those who cannot help themselves. Thank you.
Thank you, caller. Next caller, please.
Caller, you may go ahead. You have three minutes.
Good evening. My name is Vanessa. This past year has been crazy with the pandemic, economy, racism, and losing family members. As the world is crashing around us, it seems as though the city is more concerned with restricting small businesses rather than helping them. Our community is losing businesses that bring in money, that provide jobs to community members, and keep rented spaces from being vacant. When smoke shops close, it's not just our rights that are being taken away from us. It's a trickle-down effect that's negative for everyone in the community. My hope is that the council recognizes that it isn't their duty to concern themselves with any further regulation. Instead, they should let the California voters' voices be heard. Please let us, as Americans, use our power to do one big vote with SB seven ninety-three before adding any other further regulations. Thank you, and that concludes my comment.
Thank you, caller, for your comments. Next caller, please.
Caller, you may go ahead. You have three minutes.
Hello. I am Twyla Laster, Project Director of Saving Our Legacy, African Americans for Smoke Free Safe Places, also known as the Soul Project. Thank you for your thoughtful consideration on this issue. In areas where there are more tobacco retailers, there are a larger number of places where tobacco and new emerging smoke products can be purchased, which increases youth and adult smoking rates and lead to higher smoking-related illnesses and deaths. When considering race and socioeconomic status in neighborhoods, the industry increases predatory marketing tactics in partnership with retail establishments to ensure product purchase. As a result, kids and communities of color suffer disproportionately from health outcomes of smoking. The tobacco and vape industry pour millions of dollars a day into in-store marketing to entice customers with their addicting and deadly products. As tobacco policies are implemented by decision-makers, use of these products will decline and health disparities will improve. It is never a good idea to consider using blood money from the deaths of tobacco and vape use to increase profit margins of businesses. The proposed moratorium will temporarily halt new permits, licenses, or entitlements for any new smoking lounges, shops, or retailers in the city of Elk Grove. Over three hundred jurisdictions in the state have already adopted restrictions on the sale of flavored tobacco, and over a hundred and twenty of these cities chose to adopt more comprehensive ordinances that include restrictions on the sale of menthol, in addition to updating the definition of smoking to include vape, natural synthetic products like little cigars and hookah, snootchews for outdoor and indoor common areas. So over the past twenty years, retailers have adapted their business model to include these types of changes, and most have already replaced these products by selling healthy food or other items, which can make up and potentially exceed profits from selling deadly products. So I thank you again for your interest in protecting the health and safety and welfare of the residents in the city of Elk Grove. I am available to provide any additional resources that you may need. This concludes my public comment.
Thank you so much for calling. We'll go on to our next caller.
And I just want to touch base with staff. Do we have one more caller we're trying to reach?
That was everyone. There was one that was a duplicate in there that I confirmed.
Okay. With that, then, that would conclude our speakers under the Item nine point one.
All right, excellent. Then I will go ahead and close the public comment opportunity and declare the public hearing closed and open it up for discussion. We'll start with Councilmember Hume.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I actually wanted to start with a question for Mr. Diller. Shane, in the staff report, or actually in the ordinance language, it references tobacco retailers as defined in the municipal code. I didn't bother to go and look that up. Can you elucidate what the definition is in the code?
Yeah, sure. It's a fairly generic definition in that if you are retailing tobacco products, then you qualify as a tobacco retailer. That's distinct from the smoke shop or the smoking lounge in that the smoke shop is a business that primarily as the as the means of their business is a tobacco retailer. So you have the tobacco retailer, which could be a smoke shop, and that's their primary business, or you have a tobacco retailer which is just ancillary selling tobacco items like you see at a convenience store or a grocery store, that sort of thing.
Okay. So and the ordinance then is all encompassing because it does include just a general or generic tobacco retailer?
Yes, it includes anyone that would be retailing tobacco, and it would only prevent new licenses or new permits from being issued. It would not have an impact on currently existing or operating businesses.
And so I'm glad you made that clarification, because that was going to be my second question with respect to the caller that somehow implied that this would affect the value of of an existing business were it to be sold or transferred. Are these licenses, would the new owner have to apply for a new license? Is that what he was suggesting?
Yeah, what I think he was discussing was whether or not a license could be opened at the same location by a new owner. And the practice we've employed as we've had this open so far is that both any business that was in process with development services at the time the original ordinance went into place is allowed to complete their opening and obtain their licensing. But we also allow an ownership change at an existing business and will issue a replacement license, if you will, for that business, not allowing for an expansion of legitimate new businesses opening, but simply keeping the same number of businesses we have in place. And if there's a transfer in ownership, that business would be able to continue operating.
Okay. Those are all my questions. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. We will go on to Councilmember Soon.
Thank you, Mayor. I also have a question, Mr. Diller. I was wondering, how many smoke shops or tobacco shops do we have in the queue right now? There's a part in the ordinance that mentions exemptions for those that are in the queue.
We have two businesses that were in process with development services to open either in the planning process and entitlement or, you know, the physical business was under construction at the time the ordinance came into place. So we have those two. There are other businesses out there that are currently operating as tobacco retailer licenses but have been identified as will be needing a CUP. And so there's probably 10 or fewer, as we narrow those down, that are not grandfathered in some way because anything operating prior to 2011 as a smoke shop is not required to get a CUP. That zoning code requirement came into effect then. But we have, you know, 10 or fewer, somewhere between five and 10, we think at this point, that as we go out and resume enforcement here down the road that would need to come into compliance with the planning department or the planning division by obtaining a CUP.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I think I'd just add that one of the callers I think had made a good point. You know, I mean, I don't think it's effective to govern city by city. You know, people can just, as you mentioned, either go online or go to a different city. Unfortunately, you know, we're in this predicament where we've got to wait till for the state legislation to come through. And so I think this moratorium does two things. One, it preserves the rights of those that are already in business and those that are going through the process already allows them to continue doing that. But it also puts a pause to let things work out at the state level where something like this, I think, should be done so that we're not, again, not regulating city by city. And then I would just say, you know, rather than, you know, we either need to have a conversation about the legality at a national level of something like this, whether you're talking, you know, alcohol or, I mean, we've gone down the road with cannabis. But we need to talk more about prevention and education as well. And so instead of, you know, limiting the market, let's talk to the customer base about, you know, what we think is, you know, healthier lifestyles. So I'll just stop there for a second so my other colleagues can weigh in. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Spees.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The questions that have been covered both by Councilmember Soon and you. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Winn?
No questions.
So I've raised most of my questions and concerns, like, you know, two meetings ago. I'm along the same lines as Councilmember Soon and Councilmember Hume. And, you know, let's wait to see what happens with the legal process where, you know, the law that was passed and signed by the governor is being challenged. And let's go through the initiative process and see where that lands. I, just generally speaking, never a fan of creating ordinances and solutions that are more strict than the state. What I am a strong proponent and putting on my former school board trustee hat is what Councilmember Soon also mentioned, and that is the educational component. If something is available across, you know, boundaries or it's available online, you're really not addressing the root problem. And that's really where the biggest change will take place. And that really is going to require much more, taking a stronger position in the educational realm. And what I have found most successful are student-led efforts, public service announcements. Students know how to talk to other students. They don't like adults talking at them and to them. So there's great opportunity here to raise more awareness and education. And I can tell you that this needs to start at a much younger age. It's not high school. It is junior high, even elementary school. And I've heard those stories from students. So we need to start earlier. And that's where I will reach out also to my former colleagues as we do look at getting back to school and start talking about just expanding awareness on vaping and the dangers in general. If we're going to make an impact, we have to include the students and education is front and center. The second component for me is really the enforcement side of the house. We need to really go after the bad actors who are selling to underage kids. That's an abusive practice. That's what we need to go after. Lawful, abiding businesses who are selling a product that is legal. I don't want to unduly punish them. A couple of callers mentioned the COVID impact on small businesses. I am very mindful of that. I come from a family of small business owners. Leading, you know, we started an economic recovery task force made up of small business owners. More regulations, more burden, rules won't accomplish the goal for small businesses to stay afloat and save their livelihood and sustain this horrible pandemic that's impacted everyone. But if we're truly going to be impactful, I'm a strong proponent, like I said, of the education side and then the enforcement side. So if there are resources and tools that we need to allocate, I would be open for consideration for that. If the chief of police and others, you know, if we need to allocate some more, have undercover, I think my power just went off. Am I back? Can you see me? All right, everything just shut off and I'm here at City Hall. But at the risk of repeating myself, those are my two areas of interest to really go after underage vaping issues. So those are my comments.
Mayor, councilmembers, this is your city attorney. If I could clarify a point that was raised by Councilmember Hume. I think the point you were making, Councilmember Hume, is if a business sells their business to another entity, your question is really whether or not that permit would be transferred to the new owner. And under our current code, the licenses are non-transferable. It would require the new owner to apply for a new license. However, if you would like to have, and that's a separate component, than the legal non-conforming use concept that Mr. Diller was talking about, the license itself would not be transferable. However, if it's the intent of the council, and it sounds like it might be at least Councilmember Hume's intent, to allow that during the interim period to have the license be transferable, so long as there is no expansion of the use, we could implement that provision into the ordinance if that's the desire of the council.
I would certainly support that.
Yeah, I'd like to see it as well.
Okay, so great. So if that's the desire of the council, whoever, when it's time to make the motion, just note that and we will put that into the ordinance to carve out that exception. Thank you.
All right, well, we've all had an opportunity to have a conversation. Can we get a motion?
I can motion. Mr. Hob, if you want to help me this, I'm going to motion to adopt an urgency ordinance extending a moratorium on all new smoking lounges, smoke shops, and tobacco retailers within the city of Elk Grove, SEQA exempt. And what's my next line after that?
So the next line would be with the provision that if a new owner acquires an existing business, so long as there's no expansion of the use, that license can be transferred to the new owner during the moratorium.
Yes, that right there.
All right, we have a motion?
I'll second that right there.
I heard two seconds, so I think I heard Councilmember Soon. We have a motion in a second, so I think we're good.
And with the motion in a second, we will go to the roll call vote. And I will be starting with Councilmember Spees. Councilmember Hume.
Aye.
Councilmember Soon.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Winn?
Aye.
And Mayor Singh Allen?
Aye.
That ordinance has amended under item 9.1 will pass 5-0.
All right, let's move on to our next item.
The next item will be 9.2, which is a public hearing to consider a resolution adopting the Community Mobility Resilience Plan.
Let me just get my PowerPoint up. Okay. Good evening. Carrie Whitlock, the Strategic Planning and Innovation Program Manager for the city. The city of Elk Grove has developed a Community Mobility Resilience Plan in order to plan for the local impacts of climate change on the transportation system. The plan has been developed both to identify how the city will be affected by climate change through the 21st century and to provide a comprehensive set of strategies to mitigate and adapt to these impacts. The plan focuses on three core areas related to climate change. Two of these focus areas are climate-related hazards, changes in annual temperature and extreme heat events, and changes in precipitation and flooding. The third focus area is how the global and statewide trends in transportation to reduce greenhouse gas emissions, for example, with reduced fuel consumption, with reduced vehicle miles traveled, and single occupancy vehicle use, and increased biking, walking, and public transit use. How all of these will affect the city's fiscal health, specifically regarding gas tax and vehicle-related sales tax revenue for the city. The city received Caltrans Adaptation Planning Grants back in May of 2018 for the creation of a Community Mobility Resilience Plan. And the city council adopted a resolution in July 2018 to execute an agreement with Caltrans for this plan. A competitive RFP process was undertaken to award a contract for the plan development, which resulted in a contract with Ascent Environmental in June of 2019. Over the past 18 months, the city has undertaken a planning process involving close collaboration with community organizations, with residents, and various stakeholders, including Caltrans, SMD, the Sacramento Air Quality Management District, and local business leaders. Work included an in-depth analysis and quantification of the risks to the city and transportation network related to these three focus areas, which were detailed in three white papers that were released in the spring of 2020. The analysis led to the identification and selection of a range of strategies and actions for both mitigation and response to the identified risks. Proposed actions were proposed actions were costed to provide an understanding of the magnitude of resources needed to implement specific strategies, to provide subject matter expertise, and encourage greater collaboration. A resilience task force, which will include local and regional stakeholders and residents, is being formed to support implementation of the plan over the coming years. The city conducted a series of outreach activities to gain input on the plan from community residents and stakeholders, including an in-person public meeting in February 2020, an online survey for feedback over the summer, and a set of stakeholder meetings to gain feedback in the fall and winter. And we had a virtual meeting in January 2021. The analysis conducted for the fiscal impacts identified a number of concerns. In 2018, 38% of the city's general fund revenue derived from sales tax revenue and 42% of the sales tax revenue came from vehicle-related sales activities. In addition to these figures, 30% of public works, operation, and maintenance funds comes from gas tax and Measure A sales tax. This overreliance on vehicle-related sales tax revenue creates vulnerabilities for city revenue because transportation behavior is projected to change in the future. The analysis shows that three main revenue streams for the city are likely to be affected by changes in transportation behavior: sales tax, gas tax, and utility users' tax. Electric vehicle and autonomous vehicle adoption is anticipated to decrease sales and gas tax revenue, but will increase utility user tax revenue because electricity use for electric vehicles will increase. The relative increase in the utility users' tax will be insufficient to offset the decrease in gas tax. The increase in adoption of electric vehicles is being pushed at the national level as more car manufacturers are moving to increase production of electric vehicles and even ship their entire plates to electric. It's also at the state level with actions such as the governor's executive order on electric vehicle sales by 2035. And at the local level with measures in our climate action plan. Trends over the past decade have also shown declines in per-household vehicle ownership. And autonomous vehicle adoption is likely to continue or accelerate this trend. So while revenue is likely to decline, population growth in the city is expected to continue, leading to increased road usage and increased demand for city services. So these trends are expected to result in vehicle-related sales tax revenue for the city either plateauing or reducing over the next 30 years. As the city's population continues to grow, vehicle-related tax revenue per household will decrease from approximately $220 in 2019 to between $150 and $70 by 2050. Today, the local and state gas tax, as I said, represents about 30% of the operation and maintenance budget for the Public Works Department. And by 2050, gas tax revenue is projected to be 50% to 70% below current levels, resulting in a sizable deficit in funding for road maintenance in the city. So the plan identifies potential strategies that the city can undertake to mitigate these fiscal impacts. In the event that any of these strategies are taken forward for implementation, further work would be done to identify the details, complete any needed SEQA analysis, and gather council direction and approval as needed. For this focus area, the potential strategies include those that would promote more walkable neighborhoods and decrease underutilized land uses devoted to parking, promoting electric vehicle ownership and opportunities for EV-related revenue streams for the city, encouraging implementation of the city's autonomous and connected readiness plan, and also Chapter 5 of the general plan related to attracting new industries and live-work strategies to diversify the tax base, and supporting the state's transition to a vehicle miles traveled tax while also working to ensure it is implemented equitably, and finally, looking at potential tax and fiscal policies to offset the impacts of lost vehicle-related revenue. The climate-related impacts that Elk Grove will experience primarily include extreme heat and flooding. Climate change is already affecting the city's annual average temperature and high temperatures with new record daily high temperatures being set at the Sacramento Executive Airport Weather Station in August and September of 2020. Heat impacts are likely to become more frequent and more severe over the coming decades. The number of extreme heat days with a high temperature above 103.1 will increase from four days a year historically to 40 days per year by the end of the century. The number of annual heat wave events with four or more consecutive days with a high temperature above 103.1 will increase from about once every five years to more than five each year. And the duration of the heat wave events will increase to approximately 11 days. So these impacts will have an effect on our transportation system, our vulnerable populations, and our community functions. The analysis for flooding impacts shows significant impacts in the long term. Storm events are expected to increase in intensity with increased amounts of rain over shorter periods of time. Increases in the two and ten-year storm event will likely contribute to localized flooding, and increases in larger one-hundred-year events and potential regional events may lead to more widespread impacts. The stormwater management systems are designed to manage runoff from storms of a certain size based on historic data. So as storm intensities increase, these systems can be overwhelmed. As these storms increase in intensity, there will likely be impacts on the stormwater management system and secondary impacts on the transportation system, and this will then also impact residents in the community. So the plan identifies potential strategies that the city can undertake to mitigate these climate-related impacts. As mentioned with the fiscal impacts, in the event that any of these strategies are taken forward for implementation, further work would be done to identify the details, to complete any needed sequo analysis, and gather additional council direction as an approval. So the climate-related strategies are grouped together into categories that focus on particular assets or systems in the city. Both heat and flooding-related strategies are identified within each category, and a sampling of the strategies are shown here, as there are over thirty-three start strategies identified in the plan. The categories include things like a resilient roadway sys- roadway network and stormwater management system with strategies related to adapting infrastructure for extreme heat and larger flooding events, a resilient transportation system with strategies intended to ensure transportation systems remain usable for all modes and all users, including for walking, biking, and public transit. Uh resilient built environment to ensure the city's buildings and natural landscapes help reduce the impacts during heatwave events and large flooding events, a climate-ready community focused on ensuring the city operations, residents, and businesses are adequately prepared for and can quickly recover from heat and flooding events, and uh social and economic resilience focused on ensuring equity and supporting post-disaster efforts. For each climate-related strategy, in addition to providing details and that um any crossover with strategies and actions included in the city's general plan, there does there there is a description of the mechanisms through the which the strategy would be implemented, the departments within the city responsible for implementing, and any appropriate outside organizations, which would need to be included in the effort, and a timeline for when the strategy would be implemented. Additionally, the implementation framework provides a cost estimate, which is not intended to provide an exact indication uh um how much uh of the resources needed to implement the strategy, but rather is intended to provide a scale and magnitude for the strategy and interventions. So as part of the implementation framework, a community resilience task force is being formed that will help with researching and pursuing grants and funding opportunities to implement strategies and supporting public outreach efforts and strategy implementation. So the resilience plan does not require further uh environmental review pursuant to State Sequo guidelines, section uh one-five-one-eight-three, that is consistent with the general plan, and section one-five-two-six-two, that it is a planning study. Um in terms of alternative actions, the City Council could elect to not adopt the Community Mobility Resilience Plan. Um this would mean that the city would be unable to complete the tasks identified in our grant agreement with Caltrans and is therefore not recommended by staff. So with that, the recommendation from staff is that the City Council adopt a resolution finding no further environmental review is necessary and adopting the Community Mobility Resilience Plan. And with that, I am available for questions.
Alright, thank you, Ms. Whitlock. Uh let's see, I will declare the public hearing open and open the public comment opportunity.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Councilmembers, there were no callers that were uh received for item nine point two. There was one written comment that came in later this evening that was distributed to uh Council and staff for consideration, but that would conclude the public comment on this item.
Alright, thank you. I will then close the public comment opportunity and declare the public hearing closed and turn it over to my colleagues for questions and comments. Uh we will start with Councilmember Soon.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to start with the the uh comment that we received. Carrie, thank you for that presentation. Um the the comment was around tree canopies and how much that was integrated into the plan.
We do, we do actually have a um one of the strategies that's related to um I'm trying to pull it up right now, that strategy. But we do have a strategy that talks about in- increasing tree canopy and how that can help with mitigating the urban heat island effect. Um so that is one of the items addressed in that plan.
Okay, fantastic, thank you. Well, I just want to commend uh you and the staff and the whole uh team that put this together. Um you know, planning uh for this is vitally important, I feel, and so I I'm uh wholeheartedly in favor and would uh move to approve this item. Thank you.
Thank you.
We have a motion in a second. I still want to hear some if there's any more comments. I certainly want to share some of some of my thoughts as well. Um Councilmember Spees, did you want to add anything?
No, I'm I'm fine.
Councilmember Hume.
No comments. I just want to thank you, Carrie, and and uh Mr. Jordan's team for putting together a great presentation and and responding to this great opportunity. Thank you.
Vice Mayor, did you have any other comments other than the second?
Oh, thank you.
Alright, thank you. Um thank you for that excellent presentation. Um I strongly support the Community Mobility Resilience Plan. Uh the key climate-related impacts and findings I found to be alarming, and mitigating them with the uh with our strategies is obviously very important. In reading the staff report, I you identified uh thirty-three strategies uh to mitigate these climate-related impacts. So that was very impressive, definitely moving in the right direction. So I just wanted to thank you uh for your report, and that I'm a strong, strong supporter as well. So we have a motion in a second, clerk.
With that, we will continue to the roll call vote, and I'll be starting with Councilmember Spees.
Yes.
Councilmember Hume.
Aye.
Councilmember Suen.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Nguyen.
Aye.
And Mayor Sing Allen.
Aye.
Item nine-two will pass five oh.
Excellent, thank you. Uh we will move on to our next item.
We'll take us on to section ten, our regular agenda action items and recommendations, starting with item ten point one, which is to receive an update on the city's diversity, equity, and inclusion efforts for calendar year twenty twenty.
City V Mayor and members of the City Council, my name is Cara Reddick, Deputy City Manager, and I'm going to give you an update on the city's diversity, equity, and inclusion efforts for calendar year twenty twenty. I'm going to go ahead and share my screen. Can you hear me? Okay.
We have audio if you look.
Yep.
We had your shared screen. Yeah, if you want to go back, though, I think you just popped out of it.
Okay, sorry. Could you hear me?
Get back in and then go to the uh slideshow method, that would be the best.
Okay.
We have audio.
Okay.
Please proceed.
And you can see the presenter's slide?
Indeed.
Okay. Sorry, second over difficulties. So once again, I'm going to give you an update on the city's diversity, equity, and inclusion efforts for calendar year twenty twenty. Uh so this is going to include everything that the city's done, and I want to just be upfront that, you know, our efforts are really ongoing, and we still have a long road ahead, so we look forward to learning and growing as an organization. So on this first slide, kind of our accomplishments, this bottom logo is really the city's diversity, equity, and inclusion team logo, and we have a team that's made up of twenty staff members that are very diverse and cross-departmental, and they really drive many of the city's efforts. Uh so much of the report tonight you're going to learn about is uh due to their hard work. Uh the the mission, vision, and values that you see before you were a big effort that we undertook in twenty twenty. And you can read the vision and mission, but I'm just going to take a moment and talk about the values. So we have five staff values. One is personal growth, which is a commitment to continuous improvement. One is service, which is selflessly working to help others. One is integrity, which is being true in word and deed. Belonging, which is I fit in and community, many backgrounds in one organization. So in twenty twenty, in conjunction with a gender equity team that we have here at the city, we created what we call staff resource groups, which are also affinity groups. And these groups are a way for staff members who share common interests, issues, and backgrounds come together and make connections across different departments and divisions. So in twenty twenty, we opened up the ability to create staff resource groups, and we currently have one staff resource group, which is the Elk Grove Black Professionals uh that formed in late twenty twenty. And they um they kicked off a campaign for twenty twenty-one, which is the Black History Month campaign that you might have seen on social media, where they're highlighting notable Black Americans uh throughout the month of February. We also, uh through our GARE team, which is the Government Alliance on Race and Equity, we beefed up our translation services for our residents. So now we um contracted a company to provide over-the-phone video and print material translation, and this includes American sign language. So in twenty twenty, we created and posted over forty observances of various cultures, religions, holidays, and art festivals. We've been working hard to really connect with our diverse community, as well as our staff members um on the social media platform. In twenty twenty, we adopted nine proclamations to recognize organizations or people in the Elk Grove community around the topics of diversity, equity, and inclusion. So I'd like to take a minute to transition to the city's response to the murder of George Floyd. So the tragic murder of George Floyd is really a turning point for the city and how we engage our employees in the face of tragedy. You know, we learned through our staff team that members, um the city staff really wanted to talk about their own personal hurt on the incident. So in response to what we were hearing, we created um some listening sessions and healing circles for those staff. So we contracted with a consultant, and we had two listening sessions, healing circles, um that included sixty-five staff members. Out of that, we learned that staff really wanted to learn more about what they were hearing about in the news. Um so we um also contracted for a four-part series um for thirty-three staff members to learn about systemic racism, white privilege, allyship, um and other topics. Another component of the city's response uh to the murder of George Floyd is the various ways that we engaged our staff and the community. So in addition to the trainings that we did with our staff, um the City Council put out a statement. Our city manager held an all-hand staff meeting um and talked about the incident. He also put something in the city manager newsletter. The chief of police put out a statement, and our Diversity and Inclusion Commission also put out a statement um just kind of denouncing the incident and talking about the city's response. So I'd like to transition for a minute to recruiting and hiring, which is really important um when we're talking about diversity, equity, inclusion, and and a lot of this work comes out of our HR department. So um in twenty twenty, they really worked to ensure diverse candidate pools. They have a uh pool of about thirty-eight resources that they pull from depending on the job, and they also contract um with a company called Professional Diversity Network, which has a very broad diversity uh pool as well. So we really work hard to um spread our net wide for our job applicants. They worked hard to remove biases in our barriers in the interview process. You know, we continued to redact names in Nioga, um so uh biologists can't uh show up through looking at names on a job application. They created a bias training video during COVID because the interviews went online, and so they put together a great video uh for in for panel members on interviews. And then they incorporated specific diversity, equity, and inclusion questions into candidate interview questions, and they implemented panel composition guidelines to really work to ensure diverse panels. Um they shared the city's DEI philosophy with new hires, and thirty-six new hires were trained in diversity in the workforce, and as well as buddied up with an existing city employee with our new employee buddy program. We're going to take a minute and just look at some of the hiring statistics for twenty twenty. So this chart is uh new hire by ethnicity in twenty twenty, and you'll see that the percent of white and non-white new hires is almost even, with forty-one percent being white. Next chart is about gender. You'll see that fifty-seven percent of new hires in twenty twenty were female. This chart is the city's turnover ratio of employees. So turnover is the act of replacing an employee with a new employee. So if you look at the chart, you'll see in twenty twenty, the turnover ratio was really low, it's two percent. So these percentages are really important to understand when you're evaluating how new hires in comparison to staff leaving the organization impact the overall employee diversity ratio. This next chart is employee diversity ratio by race and ethnicity, and it's kind of a five-year look, and so if you you look at the bottom of the difference, that's kind of how we've done from two thousand sixteen to twenty twenty. So if you look in the um Asian column, you'll see that um our percentage has increased by two percent. As well, so the percentages of the columns that have increased are in Asian, Black, and Hispanic, and in the white column it has decreased by six. So this table is a helpful snapshot of the current staff composition by race and ethnicity. So this graph shows annual employee diversity ratio by ethnicity for the past five years as well. So in twenty twenty, thirty-seven percent of city staff were non-white. And looking at the data since two thousand sixteen, this percentage has steadily increased. So we're going to go into a little bit different topic now about how the city works to create pipelines and pathways into local government careers. So our police department uh participates in the Links to Law Enforcement Program, which is a series of workshops for participants that provide guidance on how to navigate the path to law enforcement career. We continue to participate in our Civic Summer Program, which we started with the Elk Grove Unified School District, and we hosted our sixth year in twenty twenty. Um it looked a little bit different, but we still had the opportunity to have the kids um uh participate remotely. And then the police department participated in the Sacramento County District Attorney Youth Academy, uh which is a partnership of various law enforcement agencies in the region where students can learn about the criminal justice system and hear from justice partners and engage in open communication. So some of our other efforts related to DE and I, um our city manager received an award in February uh from the League of California Cities regarding the advancement of diverse communities. As you heard earlier today, uh the chief continues with the Community Advisory Board. Uh they gave a great presentation uh earlier tonight on their purpose. We've continued to work with individuals with disabilities. You know, the city has continued its longstanding partnership with the Fly Brave Foundation, and in particular, the Fly Fit Program. You know, this proved pretty difficult to accomplish in twenty twenty due to the pandemic, but a strong relationship with that organization still exists. And the re- the city received some mental health toolkits from a local nonprofit organization with some with some support from local businesses that help bridge the gap when officers go on a call um involving autism or mental health. So some of our other efforts related to DE and I as well include our continued um ten-member resident diversity inclusion commission, our five-member disability advisory committee, our Public Works Department eliminated um gender-specific pronouns and replaced them with non-gender pronouns in their standard bid document and construction contract templates, and we sponsored the Women Transportation Seminar. And fifty percent of the city's executive team completed a training through GARE, which once again is the Government Alliance on Race and Equity, on the role of government in racial equity. And then lastly, kind of on our efforts, is we do have five gender equity staff teams here at the city, and they look at different issues um based on groups that they have volunteered for. So those five groups, there's one group called the Family Work Policies Group. One is the Staff Resource Group, which created the um the program earlier. One is the Mentorship Program Group, so they're working to start a mentorship program. One is the Leadership Role Group, so they look at different things in the city to make sure there's not barriers to advancement. And one is the Recruiting and Hiring Group, and they provide uh recommendations to HR. And we're also undergoing a DESGOT RFP and review. And we're also undergoing a DESGOT RFP review, and that's being done under the Leadership Roles Group. So in 2020 and beyond, you know, there's a lot of things that we want to do, but I just kind of called out four. So in late 2020, the police department and HR partnered with SAC State Graduate Program of Public Policy Administration to look at the recruiting and retention efforts to women in law enforcement. And so the hope is to uncover better practices in recruiting and development to attract and advance female candidates in that field. So the research portion of this work should conclude in 2020, the spring of 2021, sorry. We also want to look at more equity-based research and tools. While we talk a lot about equity and we implement it, I think additional training around this concept and tools would be very helpful for staff. And we plan to roll out our long-term training strategy with Circle Up Education, our new staff trainers. And we'd like to do a citywide cultural competency or awareness training with Circle Up as well. So I'd like to just give a special thanks to the Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Staff Team, to our resident teams that are our partners, which is the Diversity and Inclusion Commission, and the Disability Advisory Committee, as well as all the hard work of the Human Resources Department, the Police Department, and Public Affairs. That's the conclusion of my staff report. I am available for questions.
All right, thank you for that report. Let's see, any questions, comments? We'll start with council member speak.
Yes, so first I wanted to thank you, Ms. Reddick, for the very comprehensive presentation. Been a lot of good work, big going on, very important, and I want to thank you for highlighting.
Council member, Hume.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I'll echo that, Kara, Jason, city staff, all, everybody. I mean, I'm just really impressed with all the work that you guys have done, all the tactics that you've employed to really promote diversity, equity, and inclusion in the city. Great work, great work. Thank you.
Council member, Hume.
Thank you, Mayor. Always one extra button to get the camera on. Kara, great presentation, and thank you for all of your efforts, and I really appreciate city staff's dedication to continuous improvement. Just like the United States of America strives for a more perfect union, we strive for a more perfect city. And, you know, I think you're trying to put pieces in place incrementally, which is important for sustainability. And I just appreciate the work that you're doing. And having been on the front end of it with Councilmember Win, it's, it just, that seems like a lifetime ago due to COVID and everything else. And so thank you for the comprehensive report that reminds us that this is still front of mind. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor, Win.
Thank you, ma'am. I will echo the same thing as Councilmember Hume. I will say that when I was asked to serve as the Advisory Committee for the League of Cities Advancing Equity, and they sent out a survey that we had to fill out about our city, and in working with you on this and Councilmember Hume, I was able to check off a lot of the boxes. They ask if our city was already doing, and hearing this presentation, I feel like I want to go back because there were some that I said maybe or in process, and I want to go back and say, yes, we are doing it. And then I just want to add also, thank you for putting Links to Law Enforcement on there. I think what it failed to say, though, is that it is a pipeline to careers, but it specifically works with the Asian Pacific Islander, the African-American community, and the Latino community as well, too. So thank you for that excellent presentation.
Thank you. You know, similar comments from my colleagues. You did one of the best presentations. I love the work that you're doing here. This is something I'm personally very passionate about and led all those efforts in the school district. So I just love, I really admire the work that you're doing. I have a referral for you. It's a new group called Elk Grove Edge, and they've been in operation, I think, maybe a couple of months. It's a new community group, like I said, and it's a new opportunity for collaboration. The head of it, I believe it's, her name is Megan Sappagow. And I actually had the privilege of presenting to their group two weeks ago, and they were definitely looking for opportunities to build bridges and alliances with their city, and they're also doing the similar outreach with the school district and CSD as well. So I'll put you in connection with them so that you have another source to just sort of continue that work. I really loved seeing the presentation of somebody new on this team on the work that took place during one of the darkest moments in our country, and that was the murder of George Floyd. Having those uncomfortable conversations is so important because if nothing changes, then nothing changes. And I have seen systemic racism in my former hat as a school board trustee within the educational world. And so I, you know, have fought long and hard to break down those barriers. They're there. And unless we recognize that, we can't really truly work towards fixing those problems and overcoming those challenges. So I really respect that the city created a safe environment to have those conversations because they're not easy, but they're necessary. Otherwise, we go back into our comfortable zone and pretend as though certain things aren't happening in our community, but they are. And I was just very happy to see that we were a leader on this. And I definitely was very involved during this horrible crisis, not only with my own personal statement, but I also walked and marched with my other community leaders in support as well, and created our own safe healing circles and safe spaces for students to have those conversations with educators, too. So thank you for that. In terms of the hiring practices, great progress there, great work there. You know, it's one of those things, it's always a goal to always mirror staff and, most importantly, leadership, not just staff, but leadership to reflect the community. Our staff and our leaders should look like Elk Grove. So whatever efforts we do to work towards that, I think are wonderful. And then I support any efforts for increased training. I consider myself a lifelong learner, so training and professional development make us all better in our craft. So thank you for all of the work that you're doing on that. Great presentation.
Thank you.
All right, I see no other comments, so we will go ahead and move on to the next item.
And just to confirm real quick, we did not have any callers or written comments under item 10.1, but we'll carry on. And we'll go on to item 10.2, which is the homelessness initiatives update.
Excellent. Take it away, Sarah.
Okay. Okay. Good evening, Mayor and council members. I'm Sarah Von Trager, your Housing and Public Services Manager. I have a presentation for you tonight on an update on our homeless initiatives. I'm going to bring that up if you could mean just a second here. Let's see, okay. Hopefully you can see this. So I will start by giving you a little bit of background and some demographic data, and then share with you some of the resources that we currently have for people experiencing homelessness in our community, and then share some ideas that we have for spending some money that we received from the state a few years ago. So just so we're all on the same page, I know generally we all have an idea of what homelessness is, but at the federal level and the state level, there are actually many different definitions. One definition that's very common homeless is without a fixed, regular, and adequate nighttime residence. And that definition is a little bit more expansive. It could include people staying with friends or family or living in motels. The school district has even a more expansive definition that they use for families, which is that if the family is not paying rent on the housing, then they're considered homeless. But what we often think of as homelessness is what we refer to as literally homeless, and that means folks who are living in a place that is not meant for human habitation. And so that would be people who are living outdoors or in their cars. And that definition does not include people who are staying in motels or currently living with family or friends but not paying rent. What we're talking about today mostly is folks who are literally homeless. They are the subject of most interactions with our police department and our other service providers. So overall, in Elk Grove, in 2020, we had about 317 people that we contacted who were experiencing homelessness in our city. They were staying in a mix of outdoor spaces, sleeping in tents mostly, or in cars. And there was a pretty good split between those. We do have quite a few folks living out of vehicles. And when we look at why they're in Elk Grove, it doesn't tend to be that we have excellent services, although we do offer quite a few things. But what people most often cite is that they have community connections to Elk Grove. Maybe their last residence was here, their children go to Elk Grove schools, they have family or friends here. You know, they may have a family member who will let them come over and have dinner and take a shower, but they're not able to spend the night, say. And they also cite safety as a reason for being in Elk Grove. They feel safer in our community than they do in, say, downtown Sacramento. So to get that number, that 317 folks that we contacted in 2020, we looked at police department data, some data from our Elk Grove Homeless Navigator, and some data from Elk Grove Heart, and I'll share a little bit of those broken down. Our police department received almost 2,000 calls for service related to homelessness last year, a total of 202 individuals they contacted. Our police department tends to see mostly single adults and mostly people who are living outdoors. People in cars are able to stand under the radar a little bit better, and families tend to more often be living in cars than actually staying outdoors. So they interact with our police officers a little less often. The police department did monitor 87 encampments, and they completed 140 camp cleanups. And last year, they also added a second full-time, problem-oriented policing officer devoted to homelessness issues. So we do have two full-time officers out there providing better coverage and better ability to address issues and build relationships with our folks experiencing homelessness. So the homeless outreach officers work really closely with our homeless services navigator. We contract for that position with an organization called Sacramento Self-Help Housing. They provide navigators to several cities in the region, and therefore they can have kind of a standardized approach to it. Our navigator, last year, we got a really great dedicated navigator. Her name is Becky. She is very devoted to working with people and very compassionate and caring. She worked with 97 people last year, including seven families. About half of the folks she worked with were women or were in a female-headed household. About 10% of them were seniors, and about a third were disabled. You know, due to her efforts and dedication, we did have some successes. About half of those folks were actually placed in shelters or transitional or permanent housing. Unfortunately, a few of them left, but right now, as of the latest information, we have available, 37 of them remain in shelters or housing. And then another partner that we have is our Elk Grove Homeless Assistance Resource Team, or HEART. I know that many of you are familiar with the folks who work with HEART, a very dedicated group of individuals, almost all volunteers, and they have worked to address homelessness in a variety of ways. One of the key ones pre-pandemic was that they provided a winter sanctuary shelter program. That program rotated among churches for 12 weeks in the winter months, and they provided dinner, overnight shelter, and then a breakfast the next morning and transportation to and from the churches. In 2019, 20, they served 61 people, an average of 10 per night. During the pandemic, they unfortunately realized that it wasn't going to be possible to operate under the model that they'd used previously. And so we were fortunate, though, that they figured out how to pivot, and so they began providing meals to help people shelter in place. And so they ran two programs. They had a spring and summer program, served a total of 56 people. They distributed meals and hygiene supplies regularly. I think the spring/summer program was five days a week. The winter program is three days a week. They're currently serving about 80 or 85 people each of those days, taking a lunch. They've provided a number of tents, of sleeping bags, a wide variety of warm clothing, and other supplies that people need to be safe. So a big question on everyone's mind is often, has homelessness gotten worse? And I think that there's a public perception that, yes, in fact, it has. However, the data doesn't really bear that out. What we counted for this last year was about the same number of people experiencing homelessness that we documented in 2017, about 300 people over the course of a year, and about 90, maybe 120 people at any one time. What has changed is there is some increased visibility. For one thing, there are fewer overnight shelter options. Most of the shelters in the region, our local one run by HEART obviously isn't operating, but regionally, many of the shelters cut their capacity so that they could observe social distancing. And so there are fewer options regionally. And at the same time, we've had more of our residents out walking on our trails, making use of our public spaces, and seeing the encampments where folks have set up. We have also, under guidance, under public health guidance, not moved the camps or requested encampments to move frequently, and that's allowed them to become a little bit more stable and sometimes have a larger presence. You can see from this picture that our police department provided that in some cases, they've built pretty elaborate structures. So we do provide, I'll move into giving some information on resources that we provide. We provide, one of the key front doors is our homeless services navigator. The navigator really focuses on building trust and relationships with people that they need to have in order to figure out how to get help and accept help. So one of the things that she does most frequently is take people to get ID cards, which they need to have in order to move into any housing, and mobile phones, which are generally available free with a very small data plan for people with very low incomes. And you really need a phone these days to look for work, to look for housing. Pretty impossible to do without that. So she takes folks to get those things. She also can help them to get some financial benefits. She makes referrals to shelter and transitional housing, and she also completes the assessments that are needed for permanent supportive housing. I'm sorry, I'm not sure if you can still hear me. My slides are, there we go. They are advancing. Okay. So we also have our homelessness outreach officers. That's the two officers through our police department that I spoke of earlier. Their role really is collaborative with the navigator. They respond to calls for service related to homelessness. They also establish relationships with people and connect with our navigator as well as with our mobile crisis support team, which provides mental health evaluation and assistance. And they assist with camp cleanups and implement the trash cleanup incentive program. We're very proud of our trash cleanup incentive program. That was something that we started at the beginning of the pandemic. Sergeant Vena in our police department came up with the idea, and and, and we were able to set aside a little bit of our COVID related CDBG funding to provide small gift cards to grocery stores to folks who bag their own trash at encampments. We've had about fifty percent compliance with that and have used that to build some relationships and actually to get a few folks into housing. We also have our winter shelter, the EG Winds, which is our nightly shelter program, and the Winds Shelter in Place, which I, which I mentioned earlier, Run by Heart provides meals, clothing and hygiene that they deliver out to encampment locations. In terms of housing, we have two transitional houses and a third one will open this spring. We have one house for single adults and a second house for families. Both of those houses are full pretty consistently. And while people are there, they receive, in addition to just basic shelter instability of knowing where they'll sleep that night, there's a case management component provided by Sacramento Self Help Housing, which helps them to move forward with getting what they need to resolve so that they can find housing. And then there's a mentoring component that's provided by Elk Grove Heart, who really provides the encouragement and some of the assistance to meet the case management and case plan that's provided. We have also moved towards trying to get more permanent housing resources for people experiencing homelessness. And one of the great things that we have is that in our last two affordable apartment complexes that we funded, we have implemented a priority for people experiencing homelessness in Elk Grove to be moved to the top of the waitlist for those properties. For the Bow Street Apartments, we had five households that moved into that property. For Gardens at Quail Run, which will open in April and which the interest list is open now, I expect that we'll have eight to ten households experiencing homelessness that qualify and move into that property. We also funded some shared housing where people can rent rooms at low cost and they share a kitchen and bathrooms. And we work with our navigator to provide people with access to permanent supportive housing through what's called the Community Q, which is a very long list of folks who, who need housing with, with supports. We unfortunately haven't seen many of our residents be able to access that, but we do always assess them in hopes that they will be able to find a placement there. More recently, we've been able to have some motel resources. Project Room Key really kicked off at the state level and the county level at the beginning of the pandemic. And they provided motel rooms in four motels throughout the county to people who were COVID vulnerable, so seniors or people with certain health conditions. We did see seven Elk Grove households move into that program. Six of them are currently enrolled in that. They're, unfortunately, they're not enrolling new participants at this time, but they are working with all the, all the, all the folks who were staying there to try and secure permanent housing. And then we, we also funded some limited vouchers that are available through HEART and Sacramento Self Help Housing. We are looking to expand that program with some funding that we have and, and hopefully provide a bridge for, for people between when they become homeless and when they are able to access either our transitional housing or, or find another more permanent destination. And of course, I would be remiss not to mention the Elk Grove Food Bank, which has been a longtime partner. They provide food packages and a great clothing facility and will also assist people with applying for CalFresh. They'll do that application in their offices. And our Christie Cares is a local grassroots nonprofit. Christie and her team provide meals twice weekly at the Elk Grove United Methodist Church. We have a lot of folks that attend that. Our navigator also goes to those meals to meet with people because it's a, it ends up being a very convenient location that attracts a lot of folks. So we, we, as, as most jurisdictions in California do have some challenges in addressing homelessness. The biggest challenge is frankly, housing affordability and the amount of housing that we have. We've seen that, that in recent years, our strong economy has meant that vacancy rates have fallen for, for housing overall, which has allowed landlords to raise the rents. And also they have a bigger pool of tenants from which to choose, and so they tend to apply higher standards. Whereas, whereas during the, the recession in two thousand and ten, two thousand and eleven, landlords would accept people who had bad credit or evictions. Now they're generally unwilling to do that. So, so there's a much more limited set of options for folks with, with bad credit or, or a history of an eviction. And there are also higher rents. And so there, there are many renters who can't afford, who can't afford what the going rents are these days. There's not enough affordable housing units. And, and so there's, there's just not enough access to housing. We don't have enough housing. Between two thousand and thirteen and two thousand and twenty, the city added about, or added only two hundred and fifty five affordable units. Regionally, SACOG said that we needed almost thirty five affordable housing units. And so we have made more progress than many jurisdictions have, but still it's a small fraction of what we needed. And so we see with all of our affordable housing projects that we have in Elk Grove, we see that they have low vacancy rates, generally zero percent. You know, when somebody moves out, they have a new person lined up to move in right away. And they have very long waitlists. Currently, most of them have at least a three year waitlist. Some are stretching to five years. And one of the, one of the specific resources that's best for people who, who are homeless and who have significant mental health issues or substance abuse issues is permanent supportive housing. And we don't have enough of that either. And that shortage means that what is available only serves those with very high vulnerability. We don't have any local units and we've had some, we've had challenges with our, with our folks that we've been working with qualifying to meet that very high vulnerability threshold. Another challenge, a lot of, a lot of people, a lot of people recognize that, that homelessness and mental health issues and substance abuse issues can go hand in hand. Our two thousand and nineteen point in time count, which interviewed, which interviewed a sampling of, of people experiencing homelessness throughout the county, noted that twenty one percent of them reported that they had a severe psychiatric condition. And nine percent reported that use of drugs or alcohol prevented them from obtaining a job or housing. And those, those especially the nine percent may be an under report. It is really hard to find mental health care and substance abuse treatment, especially on short notice. And we don't have options, very limited options to require treatment for people who we think need it but who aren't personally interested in pursuing it. So where do we go from here? There are obviously many directions we could take and, and addressing homelessness is expensive. But we were fortunate enough in two thousand and seventeen to get an appropriation, a state appropriation for navigation centers. The state definition for that was providing flexible dormitory style living while case managers connect people experiencing homelessness to permanent housing. We have about two point eight million dollars in funding remaining in that, in that grant. We initially spent some of the funding on purchasing a property, the one that will open this spring. It's a single family home that will be used to house families. And we set aside money for operating costs for that project as well. And then, and then we stepped back and looked at some other opportunities. And, you know, at this point, it is time to think about how we want to move forward. So shared housing is the model that we started with. This has been a pretty successful model for us from a transitional housing perspective in which we buy or rent single family homes where individuals have private bedrooms, but they share kitchen and bathroom facilities. Pretty similar to our current transitional housing. It does work well at a small scale and it integrates into neighborhoods. Neighbors are often very concerned when a project is proposed. But what we've seen in the, we've had the Meadow House for six, five or six years now, and the Grace House for eight, is that we, we don't receive complaints from neighbors about these properties. There's a house, a monitor that lives on site and make sure that the residents are being respectful neighbors. There's also the opportunity to change the use of homes as community needs change. If we reached a point where we solved homelessness in our community, we could, we could use the properties as shared housing or, or sell them or stop leasing them. Another opportunity that's somewhat similar but a little bit larger in scale would be to operate a navigation hub facility. This would involve buying a renting space that could be subdivided into some semi private living quarters with some shared living space like kitchen space. The main difference here is that we would envision this as being done in non residential zoned property. So we could use underutilized commercial space or possibly a hotel or motel property. That might be less likely to generate concerns from residential neighbors, although it could still generate concern from businesses. And, you know, post COVID, we're not entirely sure what, what will happen to some of our, some of our commercial space or some of our hotel properties. And so this could provide an opportunity to support one of those properties that, that may have seen impact, seen impact from COVID. So another, another good opportunity is to partner with affordable apartment complexes in which they would include a navigation hub within a planned affordable housing development. And so folks would be integrated into housing from the start, potentially with the opportunity to partner with the property owner to reserve any units that become available first for people who are ready to move from the navigation hub into an apartment. And because, because of the scale of this, the apartment construction scale, there might be some possible construction cost savings for us. We do have an RFP out currently soliciting proposals for affordable housing development. So this could be something that we could ask a developer to incorporate in their project. We'll also be moving forward with planning for some of the city owned property that's planned for affordable housing, and we could incorporate an element of this and that as well. And then finally, we, we've spent a fair amount of time researching tiny home communities. I think most folks are, are familiar with tiny homes, very popular on HGTV and other, other media. But basically, they're small freestanding, freestanding structures, usually oriented around a community building or a series of community buildings. They're pretty flexible in, in terms of how they scale. Regionally, we see some that are a few homes in a location. Some of the, some of the bigger ones nationally have, have a lot of homes. There's one in Austin that has, I think, currently six hundred homes and they're adding, they're adding on to that. So they can really be a, a variety of sizes. But when we look at providing onsite services, you generally need to have about, about fifty of them in order to provide onsite services. One great thing about them is, is that the, what we've seen when we researched it nationally is that there's a lot of community involvement opportunities in constructing the homes. There's opportunities for youth to learn construction skills, for churches and civic organizations to come together to build the homes. And so there can be a lot of support from that aspect. They can be completed pretty quickly and moved fairly easily when they're not connected to any sort of plumbing or, or electrical. That does, of course, mean that you need to construct a more permanent building that would house bathrooms and kitchen facilities for folks. If you add those to each individual unit, the costs mount really quickly. But the challenge, the challenge has been, when we talked to communities locally and nationally, the challenge is citing. It's, it tends not to be a super popular thing from a neighbor perspective. And then just the ongoing operations costs. It can be very expensive to provide wraparound case management and services for many units onsite. Those are the, those are four opportunities. We'd like to get council feedback on, on homelessness in general and if, if there are oppor, opportunities there that you'd like to see staff pursue further or would not like to see staff pursue. And so I will be happy to take questions.
All right, thank you, Sarah. I'm getting a Michael. All right, all right. I'm gonna open the public comment opportunity.
And Mayor, Vice Mayor and Council members, for item ten point two, I don't have any callers that signed up to speak on the item tonight. There were written comments that were received prior to the council meeting that were distributed to staff and council. And then a couple of comments came in later this evening that were also circulated around the city council. With that, that would conclude the public comment made under item ten point two for this evening.
All right, thank you. Then I will close the public comment opportunity and open up for council comments. And direction, we will start with Councilmember Hume.
Okay, my ESP wasn't working that well there because I was thinking, don't call on me first, don't call on me first.
It can go on, I cannot call.
No, that's fine. I mean, it's whether I go first or whether I go later, it's, it's all the same. There was a lot packed into that presentation. I mean, it's, I'm kind of swimming. First of all, let me start just by kind of reminding everybody what a stalwart advocate and, and just rock star you are in trying to, you know, even drop a pebble into this ocean and, and provide some solutions that work for the city, work for the, the folks that are needing the assistance and also work for the community at large. So first of all, kudos to you. That being said, I, I appreciate when you mentioned on, on the respondents, the county mental health services about the underreporting because I think it's, it's popular, or maybe not popular isn't the right word, but it's becoming more common to refer to people as experiencing homelessness. And as I've said before, and it's no secret to anybody that, that talks to me about this issue, you know, I think there are myriad reasons that people are experiencing homelessness. And most of them are because they're experiencing something else that makes homelessness seem like an acceptable situation for them. That, that's for the literal homeless, homeless, as you pointed out in the definitions, obviously. Folks who are staying in places where they're not necessarily paying traditional rent is a different situation. I'm glad to hear and I've seen actually pretty widespread coverage of news and on LinkedIn and other places about the opening up of the ninety six units at Quail Run. I mean, that's, it's at least something. You know, I was one of the original proponents way back when of, of exploring the tiny house communities. And I know that staff has visited places where they've been done successfully and, and explored whether or not that would work here. And, and I hold out hope that that's still a possibility at some point in some way, just because again, I think it provides a, a certain synergy for, for the community itself as well as, you know, there's ways they structure it so that the residents have some skin in the game of the upkeep and, and building that sort of support network within those communities. But, you know, you mentioned the, the idea that if we can solve homelessness and, and sell those properties, that's the brass ring to, to shoot for right there. I mean, if you could get to where we could, we could sell those properties, that, I mean, that's the dream of all dreams. But I just, again, want to just thank you for everything you're doing. I don't have any specific direction or comment beyond what I've said. Again, there was a lot packed into that presentation. And it's a, it's a Herculean task to even undertake, trying to, to make a dent, as I said. But thank you for your efforts. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Sim.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I'm gonna.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, yeah, I'm gonna uh repeat uh the, the kudos to, to Sarah. Um, you're certainly a leader in this field uh and within this region as well. And so we want to thank you for your continued hard work in trying to address this issue in our city and, and everywhere else in the Sacramento region. Um, you know, a- as was mentioned, there's a lot packed in, but I just want to also commend you on the, just the innovative ways you guys have. You know, come about trying to uh get a handle on the problem, you know, uh with, you know, uh. Gift certificates for cleaning up, you know, your own trash, um, those kinds of things that, that try to engage and, and building relationships with the. With the homeless community. So uh, that's, that, that's great. Cause I, I think uh the more we can build those relationships and develop partnerships within that community. I think it'll, it'll um help uh benefit us in, in terms of getting a handle on things. Um, as far as direction, you know, I, I'm a, I'm a, I, I think giving you the flexibility. To uh, to implement, you know, opportunities where you see them, I think is the, is the best, in my opinion. Um, one thing I personally um contradict Councilmember Hume here. But I, I'm not a, a big fan of tiny home model because of the individual plumbing and electricity. Um, things, utilities that we need to provide to that community on a sustained level. Um, it's more of a permanent thing that kind of, you know, um stands out within the community. Whereas if, if we're able to utilize whether existing hotel or motel. Um, even uh remodeling, you know, some homes in the community, which I don't think we do enough education on to the rest of our city. Uh, how many folks are familiar with Grace House, Meadow House? And the success that we've had with those programs and those partnerships um with Heart and S A, S A, S H. I can't even say the acronym right, Sacramento Self-Help Housing. Uh, anyway, so um. You know, those models have proven out well in the community. No community, no police calls, no disturbances within the, the existing uh neighborhoods. Um, I, I'm not sure if folks really know how successful the, the, those models have been. And so I'd like to see some greater outreach about that, um, and maybe um gain some acceptance within the community. In, in what, um, what we're doing. Um, because frankly, if um, i- if, if we're not, if they're not housed somewhere. Then people are, you know, in our parks and in our front lawns and on, on our bus stops. And so the solution to homelessness is gonna be in our faces whether we like it or not. The problem is so great. If you look north to Sacramento, you can see it. So um, we've got to get out of the, the NIMBYism type of thing. We have opportunities to house these folks sometimes within our own communities and get them uh services. Um, we, we need to, we need to do that. And so I, I would just free you up to, to again, implement where, wherever the flexibility, give you the flexibility. Implement wherever opportunities present themselves. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Speed.
Yeah, um. Did the camera come on since I was gonna, I'm gonna talk for a little bit longer. Okay. All right, so uh first of all, you know, Sarah, I'm gonna um echo again what um others have said before me. I mean, there, there have been times that I've, I've called you and asked for some assistance, whether it's trying to find somebody a place or help, trying to help. Answer a question, um, or someone that has a, a question about what's going on with homelessness. You're always on the spot and you got that answer. I really appreciate that. And I want to thank you for your, your dedication to this cause. It's not easy, right? Um. Whenever we get into conversations about homelessness, right? People start making generalizations and they have misconceptions on what homelessness is, right? And it is, it is multifaceted, right? And I really appreciate that you, at least for the purpose of this conversation today. Really narrowly defined it, so it doesn't make the conversation go sideways. Um, but it, you know, it's a, a lot of times we, we have a lot of over simplification. Of viable solutions to a multifaceted problem, right? This, you know, is it, is it drug addiction? Is it, you know, um, is it uh mental health? Is it, you know, it's, there's a lot of, there's a lot of wrong going on, right? And in the end, what we want is um to be humane to people, to give them dignity, right? And to find them a place to be. So um, you know, I, I, I have to give a lot of kudos, of course, to the um, the EG WINS. And throughout the, excuse me, Zippy era, not EG WINS right now, it's EG ZIP, right? Um, and, and of course, you know, all managed by EG Heart, a fantastic group of volunteers. I, the last, not this past year, but years prior, two years prior, I had the opportunity to stay overnight. Um, and to help out. And um, you know, if you ever, if, if anyone ever wants to have an eye-opening experience, spend the night. And you'll see that your misconceptions, or mis- the misconceptions that we have, you'll find that many of them are absolutely wrong. Good and bad, right? I mean, there's, I'm not, I'm not gonna sugarcoat it. There's problems, right? There's, there's, there's problems with the population in terms of mental health and things like that. But, you know, we, we like to sit on the sidelines and make value judgment. And, you know, again, when we go back to, I appreciate you digging in and, and getting, and taking care of that. Um, so two things that I like, I really like that incentive program. Um, there's, you know, you can tell them to clean up the camp or you can incent them to clean up the camp. But in the end, what you want is, you, you want the camp clean, right? So, you know, giving a card or something like that to, to act them to, to clean up is, is a fantastic thing. Uh, I personally, uh, I guess that's actually two things, three things. Uh, the second one being what I'd like to see more of is um, I think you call it Project Home Key or Room Key, Home Key. Um, the very similar project or uh similar program was done by uh, a customers with a college about two years ago. And what they essentially did was they contacted the hotels in the area and made room blocks, right? So when it got cold or when, because there was a, there was a Senate bill, I believe, that was telling them to shelter students who slept in the parking lot. Right? Well, it's far easier and, and far less expensive, believe it or not, to buy a room block and put them up for two nights. While you get them through the navigator. This is not a long-term solution, of course. Uh, and then the third thing is, I, I, I really, the first time that I saw it, um, where, you know, we purchased a home and we, you know, we had. Folks integrated into the community. I was a little concerned about it. I thought neighbors would be unhappy, et cetera, but it worked, right? And so I'd like to see more of that. What's unfortunate is it doesn't really scale very well. We can't go buying, you know, tons of houses. Um, but I would like to see, I would like to see more of that because again, going back to dignity, right? There's, there's, there's a few pillars of dignity, right? Food, shelter, clothing, love, respect, right? Those things are dignity. And um, once again, thank you very much for um helping to restore dignity to these folks. With that, I think it's done.
Thank you, Councilmember Speed. Vice Mayor, when?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Ms. Bontrager, for the presentation. Um, really, um, as you were presenting, I was just nodding my head. Just because this is my world, right? What I do every day. And so a lot of things you said made sense. I'm not gonna repeat everything that was said. I just wanted to um kind of ask. Because I know you mentioned many of them had substance abuse or mental health issues. And my big thing is workforce development and we can give this uh temporary assistance. Um, so that they can get back on their feet. But is there anybody that you know of that you're working with that is providing um that workforce development component? So that way we can get them back into the workforce? Um, I, I know the organizations that you spoke about and they're all great organizations. I just wasn't sure if there was any one of them that was doing that, where I can assist them, giving you contacts, so that way we can assist in that area. Um, additionally, there is also other programs like utility assistance. That if you have folks that um are in the low-income housing, we can apply so that they can save some funds, right? I know we talked about the moratorium, the eviction and uh maybe getting those folks that are um coming to us for assistance. Getting them other sources of assistance as well too. Every dollar counts and every dollar can help. And so if we can assist in trying to lower that bill, I think that might help as well too. Just trying to add more resources that we can offer to our residents. And I don't, I don't have any other questions. Thank you for the presentation.
All right, thank you, Vice Mayor Quinn. Excellent, excellent presentation, Ms. Bontrager. Um, I recently had the privilege of touring with you on one of our warming centers of the Waxford site. And I really want to brag about you a little bit with everyone else. There was, it's heartbreaking. There were two families with little children. These are those cold, cold winter nights that you all remember, where we lost people in Sacramento. And that's what propelled me to reach out to Mr. Berman and Ms. Bontrager. What can we do? Because they can't be on the street. He's a little kid, it's a family. And I just want to thank you for finding them temporary shelter for those bitter, bitter cold winter nights. Um, that you do go above and beyond the call of duty. And the need is great, as you know, but those, those families, those little children have at least had a warm place to sleep. And the Waxford Center, you know, I'm just thankful that we did have a place for our unhomed vulnerable population. Um, one of the things that I would like for us to look at is revisiting the definition. Of when we open up the warming center. Because it's that, Ben, I'm forgetting how many degrees it had to hit. But even ten degrees um higher, it was freezing. And so I think there's something to look at there because we can't afford to lose anybody to this. Especially those cold, cold winter nights. They're brutal. So if there's something we can examine with expanding the definition of what triggers the opening of warming centers. Um, I think is important because it's again, goes back to what my colleagues have talked about, that compassionate lens. Um, in that, I think, you know, we all have the benefit of our warm houses and our heaters. There were some brutal weeks here in Elk Grove and in our greater region. And we could have expanded that definition further to actually open them up uh perhaps sooner. So thankfully, we didn't lose anyone and we were able to help people in real time. But um, as, you know, I don't know if we've passed the, the cold bitter winter month, who knows? With climate change, anything's possible. So I don't know that we're over it yet. But if we come back to those bitter cold nights, uh maybe we can look at opening some of those sooner. But I wanted to thank you because I know mom to mom, we spoke. And we both solved the families through our own lens as mothers. And that's, and that's how you make change happen. So just really want to thank you for that. Um, as my colleagues have mentioned, the homeless issue is very, very complex. It's got mental health, it's got temporary or long-term job losses, um, affordable housing. That persistent and severe shortage of affordable housing, as you stated. That, those are areas that we as city council members can proactively work to address. And that's definitely one of my goals, if you will, to focus on. So that we can expand and help on a more real level than we're doing. We're doing a great job, but we need to do more because we have a severe shortage. And it is likely to get worse um as the reality of COVID and job losses infiltrates into our community. As a former food bank board of director, you know, I talked to Marie Chapino. She actually sits on our task force. Our food insecure and unhomed population has gone up from a different definition. Not that necessarily that literal one that we're using. But some, you know, the, the more of the one that the school district uses, where you can be couch to couch in some of the other areas. Um, but that food insecurity has grown. I think she was saying something like seven hundred percent. So we have some challenging times ahead of us. We have community residents who need our help. And it's gonna take all of us working together to address some of those serious um issues in our community. So I'm just really proud to see that you're leading this effort. Because I know that you've come from that place of compassion and that you are looking and exploring every opportunity to help our population. To help our community. So just uh really, you know, just a great presentation. I think you did an excellent job. Um, in terms of those new opportunities, I think there's a lot of encouraging information that you have there. Um, I really like the, the homes that are integrated into communities. I think with that, um, you remove some of that stigma and the NIMBYism. And really treat people as human beings and not put a label on them. And let them integrate and be near schools and some of those things that, that are very important to keep communities intact. So um, I, uh, unlike Mr. Sin, um, I actually do support, uh, would be interested in looking at the tiny homes. Not, it doesn't necessarily have to come from a place of the permanent, um, the plumbing and some of those other features for a permanent home. But um shelters, just temporary shelters that we can use. But I don't know where we have the land or the space or the ideal location, but I wouldn't rule that out. Like that is something that I think, that I know I'm interested in. I did hear at least um another council member mention that, so. But just all of the new opportunities are encouraging nonetheless, um, as we proactively work together to provide solutions. So thank you for a very uh rich presentation. All right, uh with no other questions, we will move on to our next item. Have a good evening.
Madam Mayor, if you don't mind, uh, real briefly, I just closed the loop real quick. Mister, Mister Bearman, uh, our uh emergency manager, manager for the city of Elk Grove. We've been working with the fire department to really uh more clearly define uh those times for warming centers and the cooling centers. In those summer months. So um, I, I wanted to let you know that we're, we're actively working on that. And I'd be happy to report back uh as soon as we have a little bit uh more defined lines as to those openings.
Thank you, Chief. And I had the pleasure of meeting some of the staff from, from our law enforcement and CSD, just all of the community working together. And that's what's so encouraging is that we are actually all working together and tackling this collaboratively. So thank you for that. All right, thank you, Ms. Bontrager. We will go on to the next um item.
And that next item is item ten point three, which is to receive information and provide direction regarding a proposed reorganization of the Public Works Department.
Jason, could you confirm for me you can see the PowerPoint?
Audio and visual, everything's working. Please proceed.
Thank you, sir. Uh, good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Councilmembers, Bob Murdock, uh, Public Works Director. So the item before you tonight is to seek um feedback and direction from the council. On two proposed reorganizations in the Public Works Department. The first is the conversion of eight contract positions uh to city staff positions in the Engineering Services Division. And the second is to revise the Public Works Director position uh and its responsibilities. And to create a Deputy Public Works Director and City Engineer position. I want to be clear that um these proposed reorganizations are independent. And the implementation of one does not have an impact on the costs or the benefits of the other. So it's just as a, as a quick review of the, of the Public Works Department. So you can see the Public Works Director, City Engineers at the top of the organization. They're actually oversee two groups, uh, administration and finance and, and six divisions. Fleet Facilities, Recycling and Waste Transit, Operations and Maintenance, Capital Improvement Program and the Engineering Services Division. Uh, staffing consists of forty uh city positions and twenty-eight uh contract positions. And the current fiscal year operating budget is about forty-one million dollars. So the first item on the reorganization proposal would concern Engineering Services Division. Which is on the lower right corner of the uh, of the um organizational chart you're looking at. So with that, I can give a brief description of this division. This division provides construction management services for all of the city's capital improvement programs. It issues encroaching permits, transportation permits and street closure permits. It also provides the uh associated field inspections for those permits. It provides drainage engineering and traffic engineering in support of operations, capital projects. Um, as well as a review for those um engineering aspects as part of new development. Um, there are eleven positions. Uh, the three in green are, that you see are city positions. The remaining eight are contract positions. And so the proposal is to convert all of these positions to city positions. Um, as you can see on the, on the column on the left, uh, are the titles under the contract. For the contracted positions, uh, the column in the middle are, is the proposed title for the city positions. And on the very right column is the net annual savings between, um, that we would generate from each position. As you go down the list here, and you can see that the projected annual cost savings is about $660,000. In addition, um, I'd like to point out that the conversion would also take two part-time positions. You see a project manager too that's part-time. It's about three quarters of an FTE. It would convert it into a full-time position and the cost savings you see takes that into account. That position would actually provide additional hours in the traffic management center. And the other part-time position is a, is a Public Works Observer position. That's probably about a half-time FTE. And that again would be converted into a full-time position and the cost savings you see there takes that into account, into account. So in addition to a significant cost savings per year, I think that this conversion would help promote a long-term retention of staff and the development and, and retention of really the institutional knowledge needed to provide engineering and draining and drainage uh services for the city. And I'd like to point out that the cost savings generated would go back to several funds. It would be, it includes the gas tax fund, drainage fund, Measure A and the general fund. The second proposed reorganization would be to create a Deputy Public Works Director positions, position um in the department. And in addition, what we would do is take the city engineer designation and move it from the Public Works Director to the new deputy position. Now, generally in smaller organizations and small, smaller cities, it's very common to combine the Public Works Director and the City Engineer position. As organizations and as, as agencies get larger and the demands on times get greater and the workload becomes greater, you start to see those roles separate. You end up, you end up essentially with a Public Works Director and deputy positions, one of which uh includes the City Engineer designation. Now, the benefits of this is a reduced span of control for the Public Works Director. Now, currently, there are eight direct reports for the Public Works Director. And what you're seeing here wouldn't seem to indicate that there was much of a reduction in the span of control. But I would like to point out that a capital program and the Engineering Services Program um really take up about 50% of the time of the Public Works Director when looking at the overall workload for the year. Um, it, it just, it takes a tremendous amount of time to manage the capital program and the other services provided by those two, those, those two divisions. Um, in addition, what reorganization will do is it will allow the Public Works Director to not have to be a registered civil engineer in the state of California. The City Engineer designation is specific in California and carries certain responsibilities. For example, um, final maps. The city, a city engineer by the state law must stamp and sign final maps. So my position, having both designation means that the only, the only individuals that would qualify to be the Public Works Director have to be registered civil engineers. And I know from experience, there are a number of management professionals in the public works area and in other areas in the, in, in government that could be very good public works directors, but quite frankly can't even apply because they don't have the registered civil engineer designation. And so one of the, one of the, I think the real benefits of this reorganization is to expand the applicant pool for the Public Works Director and allow others with really good experience and good management skills to be able to apply for and compete for the Public Works Director position. Now, this position, this reorganization has several other benefits as well. I can tell you that, that the demands on my time don't allow me to provide as much oversight of the organization, the finances and interaction with the division managers. I think this would benefit not only my, the, the director and being able to provide additional time, but it would also benefit the managers of those divisions that uh the director would oversee. So they can provide more time and more assistance and oversight for those different operations. Now, this proposal does carry a cost. The Deputy Public Works Director is estimated, including salary and benefits, to cost about $240,000 a year. So in conclusion, I'm seeking, now, we're seeking feedback and council direction on the proposed conversion of eight positions in Engineering Services and the revision of the Public Works Director responsibilities and creation of a new Public Works Director, Deputy Director and City Engineer position. And you can see that the net, um, the net impact on cost is about a $420,000 savings um to the city. And just to let the council know, if, if the feedback and the direction is to move forward, all of this would be made as part of next fiscal year's budget and the, the hiring and recruitment would occur next fiscal year um moving forward. Nothing would happen this fiscal year. And with that, um, concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions you have.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Murdock. I will now open the public comment opportunity.
And Mayor, Vice Mayor and Councilmembers, there are no callers signed up for item 10.3 and no written comments were received under this item. That would conclude the public comment for item 10.3.
All right. Excellent. Then I will close the public comment opportunity and open that up for um council comments, direction. We will start with uh council member Spees.
Certainly. So uh, thank you for the presentation. Very straightforward. I think that as organizations mature, as we have, it becomes, at some point it becomes appropriate to do just this. So um, looking at this, I, I think this is, um, you know, I'm certainly open to more conversation. Uh, but I think that we, I think this is the right direction to add. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Sun.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, yeah, I, I agree. I think uh this, this balances out the span of control uh better uh for the, for the Public Works Department. And uh, we're, we're still able to save, you know, over $400,000 annually. So I'd support this. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Hume.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, Bob, I got a couple of questions for you. Um, first of all, thank you for the presentation and also for the background provided in the staff report. You know, having been on council when the Sinclair report was released, uh, it hit the streets. And remember that it did recommend that uh kind of to what uh council member Spees references the maturation of the, the organization. Um, and then also being uh receiving the report from Schoberg, uh, Evershink on um uh essentially saying the same thing of the efficiencies and the control that would be gained by doing this. So I, I appreciate, I just want to provide that little bit of, of background to say that I appreciate the, the steps and the, the measures that are being taken. But um with respect to your annual cost savings, you know, in, in the world of uh, of uh capital improvement programs, there's, there's bond financing and there's pay-go. And uh, so my question is, you, you present what the annual cost uh potential savings or, or would be. Did you do any actuarials that would project out over um, you know, even a 20-year span when we get into having to pay for the positions as well as uh make the pension obligations?
I, I did not, I think, but I think the cost savings themselves, I think, would support that. I mean, it's a significant cost savings. We did the same thing about a year ago at O and M. Um, but I have not projected out as far as uh PERS costs go, I think. But that cost, the cost of the PERS uh benefit is included in the calculation you see. So the cost for the city positions and the net cost savings includes the provision of PERS for those individuals. I, but I did not do a projection out to see if there might be a change in impact over, say, 20 years.
But your gut feeling is, is that the annual uh realized savings makes up for the difference that would, that would come uh later down the road?
Absolutely, absolutely. And there's, there's just other benefits. We've just, what we've seen at O and M is, is the staff, that the team that was assembled there is, has, has tremendous amount of experience and, and skills that um that have been put to use and generated additional savings well and be, well above and beyond the million dollars in salary and, and benefit savings that we, and I would anticipate this would happen here as well.
Good. Thank you.
That's what we're hearing. Let me just add to that on the first cost. I want, I think one of the things that is unique about Elk Grove here, about these cities with these massive unfunded liabilities for PERS pensions and things, because of the way the city has funded those over the years, in the last several years in particular, about pre-funding our long-term outstanding obligations, we're not projecting significant increases in our PERS rates over time. In fact, over the next 10, 15, 20 years, we're expecting those rates to, in fact, go down because of the efforts that we've taken um to pre-fund those. So we're not, we're not anticipating any kind of large ballooning of those costs in the future years. So what you're seeing here, we expect those costs to just continue into the future in a similar manner.
All right. Uh, Vice Mayor, Wynn.
Thank you, ma'am. I don't have any questions. I just really like seeing the word cost savings really embedded here. Thank you.
I will be brief and echo the same comments. Thank you, Mr. Murdock, for that great presentation. I love reorganizations that include stock cost savings. So that's always a, a bonus. So thank you for that. Um, I will look for a motion here.
I'll move the item.
Second.
I think we're just looking for direction.
Yes, I'll direct the item.
We like it. All right. We will move on to our next item.
And that next item is 10.4, which is to consider a resolution and that would combine the city and police department information technology divisions into a unified information technology department and subsequent actions for reclassifying positions and adopting a revised citywide salary schedule based on those reclassifications.
All right. Uh, Mayor, members of the city council, this is Jason Berman, City Manager. Again, I'll be making this presentation and unfortunately, I'm not going to be able to show a, a large cost savings on this next reorganization item. But the mod, the, the increased costs are very modest uh with, with what we think is a significant benefit to the organization. So um, I don't have a PowerPoint, but if, Mr. Murdock, if you could stop sharing your screen, um, I'll go ahead and do a brief presentation for the city council on this next item. So in January of this year, the city's Finance and Administrative Services Director retired with this vacancy staff devaluing the position and department structure and is uh now recommending that the position be changed to simply Finance Director to the city's IT division that had been under this position instead be combined with the Police Department IT division to create a new IT department led by a Chief Information Officer. Currently, there is one city IT administrator oversees seven staff specifically focused on IT services for all non-police department staff as well as citywide geographic information system services, GIS. Um, and the Police Department has one IT administrator oversees six staff and focuses on all IT services for the Police Department, including the city's 911 system. Staff believes that by combining IT services into one functional unit under a Chief Information Officer, there are multiple benefits. Uh, first, it strengthens and elevates the position of IT and services of IT within the city. Instead of being in separate divisions uh within PD and Finance, the CIO position now will become part of the city's executive team. Elevating that position will have a greater influence in the city and the decisions and direction we take as an organization. Also provides for better coordination and communication for citywide IT functions, unifying our approach, allowing for an alignment of policies, network infrastructure, purchasing, improved organization-wide focus on cybersecurity threats, et cetera. Um, also provides greater staff cross-training and collaboration among the IT staff that will allow for more professional development opportunities. Uh, I want to be clear also that we're not creating a new position, but rather reclassifying one of the city's existing IT administrator positions, and we will be going through an internal promotional process to fill that position. Uh, because of this, the costs associated with the reorganization are, are minimal. Staff estimates a cost of less than $5,000 this fiscal year. Um, technology is only going to become more integral and critical, everything we do. As we've seen during this last year with the pandemic, our reliance in technology, the things we've been able to transition to when it comes to um communication, also services that we provide, um, those things are just going to grow and expand in future years. Um, so it'll help us to continue on the path uh as an organization that embraces innovation and change and is best able to support the needs of staff, the organization here, but ultimately the community going forward and the, and the services that we provide there. So staff therefore recommends that the city council adopt a resolution combining the city information technology division and the Police Department IT division into a unified information technology department, reclassifying one IT administrator position to Chief Information Officer and adopting a revised citywide salary schedule to include salary information for the new CIO classification. And that concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions that the council may have.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Berman. Uh, at this time, I would like to open the public comment opportunity.
And sorry, just not hitting the right button. Uh, but Mayor, Vice Mayor and Councilmembers, for item 10.4, we have no callers signed up to speak and no written comments were received beforehand. That'll conclude public comment on item 10.4.
All right. Thank you, sir. I will now close the public comment opportunity and open it up for council comments, direction. I will start with council member Spees.
Almost hit the wrong button. That was almost the hang button, hang up button. Um, so I'll keep it short, but I, I support this. And um, one of them most uh primarily um because of what you said in terms of unified strategy for the information technology across the enterprise. Um, so many times we've seen it where there's, you know, different stovepipes of information, information technology. Sometimes somebody buys something here, but it's something is bought over there, different vendors, et cetera. It makes things difficult. I think it only makes sense, so I support it.
All right. Councilmember Sun.
Hopefully, uh, it's unified strategy and not become somebody preferred Android, the other one preferred app, right? So, yeah, I, I support it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Hume.
You know.
Excellent. Vice Mayor, Wynn.
I support it as long as it's an Android.
Um, I support it as well for the reasons stated. I think it'd be an excellent um case, so definitely in support. So with that, I will look for a motion from council.
So moved.
Second.
All right. We have a motion in a second.
And for the roll call vote on item 10.4, I will start with council member Spees.
Yes.
Councilmember Hume.
Aye.
Councilmember Sun.
Aye.
Vice Mayor, Wynn.
Aye.
And Mayor Singh Allen.
Aye.
The resolution of item 10.4 will pass 5-0.
All right. Next item, please.
And that will take us on to item 10.5, which is to consider appointment of voting members to the Historic Preservation Committee, the Diversity Inclusion Commission and the Planning Commission. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor and Councilmembers. I'm Jason Lindgren. I'm your city clerk. Uh, for this item, this is actually appointments in three of our different uh committees or commissions. The first is for the Historic Preservation Committee. Uh, what we had was one applicant for one vacancy. Um, what makes this one a little more complicated is that the standing membership of the HPC consists of five voting members and two alternate members. So tonight, there would be the option that one of the alternates could be moved up into a voting member position. And then if that was creating a, a subsequent vacancy in the, in the alternate positions, the new applicant could then become an alternate on the HPC. We move into the Diversity and Inclusion Commission. We have one vacancy uh that's open for a spot from feedback that came back from one of our applicants. They actually withdrew their application at this time citing personal reasons and scheduling differences. And so we actually have seven applicants for the Diversity Inclusion Commission. And finally, we have the Planning Commission in which uh the seats of the Planning Commissioner are open. We had 16 total applicants, which include the, the five standing planning commissioners. And we do have about 14 callers signed up this evening for general public comment. And then we received some written comments as well, three written comments um from both applicants and those supporting applicants. Um, but with that, I turn it back over to the council if you have any questions. Um, but then we can also take the guidance for when to start bringing in potential applicants here.
All right. Let's uh, let's open up the public comment opportunity.
All right. And we'll start pulling in those callers.
Okay, thank you.
Caller, you may go ahead, you have three minutes.
Great, hello Mayor and Councilmembers. My name is Nadia Melgosa, and thank you for the opportunity to participate in tonight's meeting. When I came across the vacant position on the Historic Preservation Committee, I was excited by the idea that I could get back to the community through my growing professional skill. Here is a little background about me. My family has resided in Elk Grove since nineteen eighty-nine. I have a BA in architecture from the University of California, Berkeley. And since, I gained some real life experience through my current position as an architectural associate at an office called RSS Architecture. My office specializes in commercial, residential, and multifamily projects. Uh my previous employer was a company called Gilman Kitchen and Lab, where I was a designer, and we focused on interior renovations. I would like to be a part of this committee because I feel that history is an important connection to our heritage as a city. Uh my personal interest in architecture started at a young age when I was able to compare new developments and more time-tested historical buildings. The work done by the Historical Preservation Committee is important to continue so that future generations can witness our city's history. And to learn and be a part of that process would be a great privilege. Uh thank you for your time and consideration of my application to the available seat on the Historic Preservation Committee. That's the end of my statement, um although I'm open to questions or comments, thank you.
Thank you caller, we will go on to our next caller please.
Caller, you may go ahead, you have three minutes.
Hi, my name is I am a person interested in serving on the commission for the Inclusion, Diversity, and Equity Commission. Uh regardless if I am picked whether or not, I would like to commend the city of Elk Grove for their efforts in this area and commit to serving my city in any way possible on this commission or off this commission. Uh I am proud to be a citizen of Elk Grove. I've spent the better part of forty years as a worker in this community, as an educator, and as a retiree now. I look forward to offering my time and uh my talents to this city when it comes to this area. I thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak and to our mayor. I am so very, very, very proud that uh you are leading our community, take care, thank you.
Thank you sir, next caller please.
And thank you everyone for your patience as we just cycle through and try to get our callers online for item ten point five here. Um but we still do have a series of about a dozen callers, um and it's just making that connection with a phone call and then pulling them into the meeting environment.
Caller, you may go ahead, you have three minutes.
Hi, uh Madam Mayor and City Councilmembers, my name is John Hall. I've made application to be considered for appointment to the City of Elk Grove's Planning Commission. My wife and three children have been residents for almost twenty-two years. An item on the election ballot right after we moved here was to approve cityhood for Elk Grove. It was a wise choice for a town at the time of about fifty-three thousand residents. In a matter of just a few years, the population has tripled as has our traffic, but Elk Grove has responded over time. Now we have a wonderful, safe, clean city to raise a family and make a living. I can really think our best things are ahead of us. Little bit about me, my first few years here, I served on the boards of several youth baseball and football groups. After leaving the broadcast career at KFDK on KSDU Radio in two thousand and four, I began teaching media studies and journalism at Somnus River College. In two thousand and seven, I added sports writing to my resume. For eleven years, I was on staff at the Elk Grove Citizen Newspaper, all the while teaching and doing some fill-ins on local radio. I retired from all that though in the summer of two thousand and nineteen, and now I believe it's time for me to serve my city. Uh the decisions we make on the Planning Commission over the next couple of years will probably impact Elk Grove for the next maybe forty years. Our existing available parcels of land offer some great opportunities for growth, and I believe that would bring to the Planning Commission a fresh perspective on how that could be utilized. Our city frankly needs more jobs, more places of entertainment, geek, retail, and shopping opportunities. And as a sports fan, yeah, I'd love to see us have a baseball park one day, maybe a soccer stadium. And let's go in an eighteen-hole golf course at the same time, but you know frankly, folks, that's my vision. I know as a planning commissioner, I need to have a couple of open ears and an open mind to use God-given wisdom on what is appropriate to pass on to you for final approval. Our city's done a great job of planning, and I know that we would contribute to all the cities in the Sacramento region. I'd work hard with our city planners to understand the notes, and that's involved zoning and building regulations, and I would also make certain as a commissioner, that each application will be with unique environmental impact, its effects on neighborhood sand, its design, and I promise I'll never refuse myself for conflicts of interest, as I won't have any. Folks, I look forward to helping Elk Grove ready itself for the next generation of residents, thank you very much.
Thank you sir, uh next caller please.
Caller, you may go ahead, you have three minutes.
Good evening. Right, am I on?
Yep, go right ahead.
Okay, good evening Mayor and City Council, my name is Keena Mizote, and I'm asking for your consideration of my appointment to the Diversity and Inclusion Commission. I've lived in Elk Grove since nineteen ninety-four and reside in Council District Three, represented by Councilmember Kevin Speed. The diversity of our city is one of the reasons why I've lived here for over twenty-five years. I would like to serve the commission to help further its efforts, be an educational resource to our residents, and to assist our city government and community in eliminating all forms of discrimination, hate, and bias. For the past thirty years, I have been an employee with the city of Sacramento, where I've had the opportunity to engage with residents, business leaders, and city council members to address and resolve a variety of problems and issues. I've learned how to effectively communicate with others to ensure that I understand and appreciate those experiences and perspectives that may be different from my own. As you will see from the resume that was attached to my application that I sent to the mayor and council, my professional skills and experience could be an asset to the commission, and I would love the opportunity to apply my skills and experience to serving my community. Our diversity is one of our city's greatest assets. If appointed to the Diversity and Inclusion Commission, I would be committed to a commission to create a more equitable and inclusive government and community. Thank you for your serious communicate uh consideration.
Thank you caller, next caller please.
Caller, you may go ahead, you have three minutes.
Hello Mayor and City Councilmembers, I'm interested in being considered for the Diversity and Inclusion Commission. My name is Margaret Caleri, a US Marine veteran and an Asian American. I've grown up in Elk Grove and have always felt something special of this place we call home. Our city is unique to the rest of the world and is ever-changing with the growth for the better. Diversity, just one of the many attributes that make our city a great place to live and grow up. However, if I'm to be honest, there seems to be a lack of adequate representation of veterans in our community, especially veterans of color, whom arguably face some of the toughest challenges in our society today. As diversity can come in all forms, and one overlooked category is veteran status. Veterans can face a unique challenge, not always understood, and for which we can face a harsh reality of discrimination, especially as minorities, fostering a feeling of unclusion, uninclusion. As it stands right now, according to the United States Census Bureau in two thousand and nineteen, currently six percent of our population in this city are veterans, much of which veterans of color, yet we have little to no representation. This is not including our current residents that are actively serving our nation across the world today. This, in my humble opinion, is deeply concerning to our service members returning home, as I once did, families of veterans, or even veterans seeking to move to our city. Next, I want to talk about representation of young adults in our communities. Elk Grove is a growing city, with much of our youth now seeking higher education at local universities and begin their professional careers while attempting to live at home. This in itself provides a unique challenge for many of us attempting to grow our lives in our home cities. And that may come overlooked by our leadership such as challenges and recognition, inclusion, and planning. Thus, it is my hope, if given the opportunity, while keeping with the given task of the commission, focused around the three tenants of education, ambassadors, and providing council feedback, as I hope to provide as a Marine veteran, TSU Sacramento State student, and engineering professional. I hope to help our city bridge key gaps in the lacking representation within the Diversity and Inclusion Commission. Thank you.
Thank you caller, uh next caller please.
Caller, you may go ahead, you have three minutes.
Uh good evening Mayor and Councilmembers, it's Planning Commissioner George Murphy. Um it's been a an honor and privilege having been chosen to to serve on the city of Elk, serve the city of Elk Grove with citizens and my immediate commu- community. I would be honored once again if with your nomination and consent, I'm allowed to continue my service. With my years of experience on the Planning Commission and institutional knowledge, I believe I can guide the commission through changes in membership and mentor new appoint- appointees as they learn the ropes. Um I thank you for your uh confidence and consideration, and I look forward to your many years of service, thank you.
Next caller, next caller please.
Caller, you may go ahead, you have three minutes.
Thank you. Good evening Mayor and City Councilmembers, uh my name is Gus Vina, and I'm speaking to you tonight about the opportunity to serve on the Planning Commission for you. Um after forty years in government, uh thirty of those years at the local level, um I was able to retire at a very young age of fifty-nine, looking for something very meaningful to do and to give back to my community. And I believe that serving on the Planning Commission and assisting council on important planning projects um is exactly uh what I would love to do. Um all cities eventually uh end up at the critical point uh in their development and in their growth, having to balance between businesses and rooftops and jobs. Um and Elk Grove is hitting that point now. Um and what I'd like to uh share with you, um in addition to the materials that I submitted to you, is I had thirty years of local government experience, ten of those years as a city manager in three different cities, and I think that I would serve you very well on the Planning Commission with my experience on general plan, and housing elements, specific planning, and the very issue I mentioned of uh continuing to drive the city through good growth principles. Um and I would bring all of that experience um to the table. I know you have important decisions to make on all your commissions, I wish you well on that. I would love to serve on the Planning Commission um for you. Thank you very much for the opportunity, given the lateness of the night and all the people you have to listen to. I will leave it there and uh let you take a look at the material that I submitted in the interest of serving on your Planning Commission, thank you very much, and good luck with the decision.
Thank you sir, uh next caller please.
Caller, you may go ahead, you have three minutes.
Good evening Mayor Singh Allen, Vice Mayor when, council members and fellow citizens listening. My name is Anya Jean Woods, but I'm known in the community as AJ. Um first, I'd like to thank you for having me this evening. I'm here this evening to tell you a little bit about myself and why I want to be a planning commissioner, and with the hope that you will select me to be your next member of Elk Grove's Planning Commission. I've been a resident of the Sacramento County for the past twenty-six years, with my residency in Elk Grove for the last nine years. Elk Grove is home to me and my family, my children attend school here, my husband and I work here, we enjoy our lives here in diverse cities. Elk Grove's fast-growing population now over a hundred and eighty thousand has made us the seventh most diverse city in the country, and I feel our commissions should reflect that diversity. Like this city's population, my background and body of work throughout the community are extremely diverse. I am a women's advocate for the Sacramento Women and Girls Advancement Coalition, as well as with Elk Grove Edge. I'm an alumni and continue to partner with my alma mater of McGeorge School of Law. I'm a fellow at the NEMI Emerging Leaders, and I sit on the board of the Cottage House Inc., where I can stand in the gap and serve the homeless community in the Sacramento area. My experience with these groups has groomed me to be a servant leader with the ability to balance the needs of the people and what is best for the community as a whole. I see the potential in this city and realize the importance of practicing good stewardship for of our land and our community. I want to join the Planning Commission with the commitment of further development in the Elk, in Elk Grove that is responsibly funded, employment-oriented, and provides housing at multiple price points, which will allow equitable living with dignity for our citizens. It is important to also maintain our city's beautiful landscape and build upon the values the city has upheld for the last twenty-one years. I'm not only interested in how I am able to live and thrive in Elk Grove, but I'm interested in making sure our future generations are afforded the same, if not a greater, ability to live and thrive here in Elk Grove. If there are any questions at this time, I can take them, but I do thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you caller, we will move on to our next call please.
Caller, you may go ahead, you have three minutes.
Good evening Madam Mayor and Council, this is Mackenzie Weaver, and I wanted to thank all of you for allowing me to work with you over the past four years, as I have served on the Planning Commission here in our great city of Elk Grove. I've truly enjoyed serving our city, and I come to all meetings prepared, I do my due diligence, and I work closely with staff to make sound decisions. I'm really enjoying mentoring new planners as well. I'm looking forward to continuing my service, so I ask for your appointment tonight. Thank you all for the opportunity to continue making Elk Grove the city we love to work, play, and live in. Thank you so much for your support, have a great night.
Thank you caller, we will go on to our next caller please.
And appreciate everyone's patience as we're reaching out to our applicants, uh have your phones ready to pick up uh as we reach out to you to dial you in for item ten point five. And as we grab these applicants, uh we will patch them through into the meeting environment.
Caller, you may go ahead, you have three minutes.
I'm on.
Yep, go ahead.
Alright, thank you Mayor, Vice Mayor, and City Councilmembers for allowing me this opportunity to register today. I am Michelle Kyle, and I am applying for an appointment to the Planning Commission. I have been a resident of Elk Grove for eleven years in the old Elk Grove area by Elk Grove High School, and I have objected outside the city limits for six years prior. During that time and even before, I have been a committed volunteer within the Elk Grove School, Youth Force, and a community activity volunteer. I have a continued investment in the growth of rural Elk Grove for the future generations to enjoy. I have an extensive educational background with two bachelors and a master's degree, all homegrown here at TST Sacramento, all of which required an excessive amount of research, so I have the capability of researching any project and being able to come to an informed decision, and I feel this would be beneficial towards Elk Grove and the Planning Commission. As a member of Elk Grove, I did not want to be just a resident, I wanted to help the community and citizens while I was here. I have been a coach and a board member in Youth Force. I volunteer currently at a nonprofit that aids the unhoused families with motel vouchers, as well as families with rental assistance and utility assistance in Sacramento County with many clients from Elk Grove. I've been an active member in the community event, like the pancake practice in Santa that begins there, to feeding the unhoused group lunches at the local nonprofit, fifty care. I've helped during the pandemic on a regular basis, have delivered food to seniors all over Elk Grove for the Elk Grove people, and delivered senior Santa gifts for the Elk Grove chamber. I was a parent member for the school site council at John Reed Elementary, and an in-class volunteer for classrooms. Some didn't even have my children in them, and I was also a fingerprinted driver for the Somnus Oak High School to transport students to and from sporting events. I have always been an active member of the community all over Elk Grove, not just in my immediate living area. Elk Grove is a diverse city with several very distinct areas that each have their own issues as well as attributes for the city. From the rural side of eastern Elk Grove to the quiet gated communities of the west, while on the Planning Committee, this would be something that would need to be handled with care and consideration for each unique area that makes us all of Elk Grove, and study how each project would benefit all Elk Grove in the future. I have been involved behind the scenes for a long time, and I felt it was finally time for me to step forward and take a more outward approach in addition to my other activities, to volunteer and help the city of Elk Grove and the great Elk Grove residents. Thank you for consideration. Thank you for consideration for an appointment for the Elk Grove Planning Commission, and this concludes my public comment. Thank you.
Thank you caller. Uh, we will go on to the next one.
Caller, you may go ahead. You have three minutes.
Good evening Mayor, Vice Mayor, and City Council Members. My name is Sandra Poole, and I appreciate the opportunity to provide comments this evening to reaffirm my interest in serving on the Planning Commission. Some may recall that I had the privilege to come before this body in October of last year. As a long-term resident of Elk Grove, I have watched the growth and transformation of our community. As with any growth, there will always be difficult issues to resolve along the way. However, I believe that with a commitment to doing what is best for all residents, Elk Grove will continue towards the goal of being a world-class city. When considering applying for this position, I thought about what motivated me to purchase a home in Elk Grove, and also what I could contribute to the Planning Commission. After researching several communities, I moved to Elk Grove because of its reputation of being a diverse and safe community for my family. The city's vision statement that Elk Grove prioritizes a superior quality of life built upon the community's diversity resonated with me. What I would bring to the Planning Commission is vast professional and volunteer experience in government, nonprofit, and private organizations. My professional experience includes having served as a deputy director in one of the largest state departments in California, president and CEO of a nonprofit health advocacy organization, and policy manager for a Fortune 500 health plan. After retirement, I started my own consulting business. In addition to a master's degree in public administration, I have volunteered most of my adult life with several nonprofit organizations with the goal of serving and always giving back to my community. In all of my professional and volunteer positions, I have been successful in resolving complex issues by adhering to core principles of respecting and treating others with dignity, being open, inclusive, and listening to diverse ideas while strive, while striving for a win-win solution. I have strong analytical and organizational skills, diplomacy, and good judgment. I believe these characteristics would allow me to be a productive and positive addition to the commission. If appointed, I am committed to contributing my experience, talent, and skills with a focus on continuing the progress that is being made in the city of Elk Grove. Thank you, and that finishes my comment.
Thank you ma'am. Uh, we will go on to our next caller please.
Caller, you may go ahead. You have three minutes.
Thank you. Good evening Madam Mayor and Madam Vice Mayor and members of the council. My name is Sergio Robles. Um, I currently have the privilege or was elect, uh, was appointed to serve about five months ago on the Planning Commission, um, and it's been an honor to do so. Um, you know, the Elk Grove Planning Commission provides a fundamental service for our community. It fully vets projects that serve as a backbone for our high-paying jobs and community. The Planning Commission serves as a local gatekeeper for our grounds that have so many diverse projects, and it is necessary for our city to continue growing on its values that have provided stability in the past. I truly feel like it has been an honor to serve on the Planning Commission, and I hope to do so, and I hope to be appointed today, um, not only as the city grows in numbers and as a whole bunch of projects continue to come, but I hope to represent, um, young professionals as well as, um, the new people who are within the region. Um, I hope to get your support today, and, uh, thank you for, for allowing me the privilege to speak.
Thank you caller. We will go on to our next caller please.
Caller, you may go ahead. You have three minutes.
Mayor Singh Allen, council members, and fellow citizens of Elk Grove, good evening. My name is David Lang, and it is my honor to be considered for the Elk Grove Planning Commission. I've lived in Elk Grove with my family for over sixteen years now and love our community. This is where I have chosen to raise my son and daughter. It's where they go to school. It's where they play sports and where I have coached their teams. It is where we shop, eat, play, and exercise. When I'm not in Elk Grove, I'm likely on the Sac State campus, where I am the department chair and a professor in the economics department, where I have proudly worked for the last nineteen years. I have a bachelor's degree from Stanford University, and both a master's degree and PhD in economics from Washington University in St. Louis, Missouri. I truly believe that my expertise, my commitment to service, and my love of this community make me an excellent fit for this commission. I believe that serving on a planning commission is hard, challenging work. It requires an ability to balance the interests of multiple citizen constituencies, along with the commercial needs of our business community, while considering the future costs and benefits in an uncertain world economic environments. I'll be honest, that sounds like the job of an economist to me. I am ready, willing, and eager to serve our city as a commissioner, and would do so with an open mind, compassion, and a full set of analytic tools at my disposal. Thank you so much for your consideration.
Thank you sir. Next caller please.
Caller, you may go ahead. You have three minutes.
Hello Mayor and Council Members. My name is Ryan Belvin, and I am a candidate for the Diversity and Inclusion Commission. I've spent the better part of the last eighteen years helping to elect leaders that I know will put forth legislation on the local and state levels that will focus on the advancement or inclusion of diversity for the people they are elected to represent. From the Women's Marches in Sacramento to the Black Lives Matters protests here in Elk Grove at Laguna and Birthville, which was a response to the murder of George Floyd, I have always been concerned with the advancing, the cause of underserved communities. And the commission is the best way, the, and the most direct way to do my part to advance diversity and inclusion in the city we love. I grew up in a family that embraced diversity and inclusivity, and I am continuing that embrace with my young family. I look forward to representing the city we love on the Diversity and Inclusion Commission. Thank you for your time and your consideration.
Thank you for calling. Uh, next caller please.
I need just a moment to get our last caller on the line.
And appreciate all the effort staff as we pull on the last caller for item ten point five. Um, we've gone through a, a sequence of the applicants, um, and I think this is grabbing on to our last caller who signed up to speak.
Caller, you may go ahead. You have three minutes.
Uh, good evening Mayor Singh Allen, Vice Mayor Nguyen, Council Members Hume, Soon, and Spees. My name is Simon Slinger, and I would like to thank you for the opportunity to speak with you regarding my interest in the Planning Commission. In the interest of time, I will keep my comments brief. I moved to Elk Grove from Connecticut in twenty thirteen when I retired from the University of Connecticut, following a productive career as professor and ultimately as vice president. Uh, during my background, during my years at the University of Connecticut, uh, I achieved a lot of, uh, things which I have provided in my resume, and I will not repeat them at this time. So the question is, why did my wife and I choose to move to Elk Grove where we did not know the story? This was a major life decision, and we evaluated a number of communities from St. Louis, Uofc Northwoods. We settled upon Elk Grove because of the quality of life that this city offered. It was the best decision we could have made. Elk Grove was all that we were looking for in a community and more. I believe retirement is the time for me to give back to the community of all the blessings that I have received during my life. Consequently, I've been active as a volunteer in my home association and serve on its board. Uh, I am on the Board of the Elk Grove Food Bank. I've assisted at C S D and other places. I would like to help continue to be the vibrant community during my lifetime and beyond. As a former university administrator and a scientist, I have an, I have an analytical mind and have never shied away from tough decisions. I have the knowledge, skill, and abilities to make a positive contribution to the Planning Commission so that Elk Grove continues to grow in a sustainable manner. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Uh, was there another caller, Mr. Lindgren?
I think that's, concludes our callers on item ten point five.
All right. Well, I'm just really impressed with the pool of applicants. Um, this is always a hard decision. Um, first and foremost, I want to thank everyone that did apply, and everyone who wants to serve and has already served. Our community is enriched when it's, um, when it includes residents like yourself who want to step up and volunteer. So I sincerely thank everyone for their application, for their dedication, and their existing service, and hopefully continued service, whether or not you get appointed, um, to the commission, for any of these commissions. So we will start just in order, uh, with the Historic Preservation Committee. So we did hear from the applicant, Nadia, and what I would like to do is make a motion to actually appoint her as a voting member, as opposed to moving up one of our alternates. One, one reason, there's only one woman right now that serves, um, on the Historic Preservation Committee, so we definitely need more, uh, gender diversity there. So I would like to appoint her for that reason. Uh, she's extremely well qualified, so I think that she is more than capable of being a voting member. So I would move, uh, Ms. Melgoza as a voting member of the Historic Preservation Committee.
Mr. Lindgren, did any of the alternate members, uh, show interest or say anything about becoming a voting member?
No, but there's also no, I, I did not conduct any outreach out to the alternate members, um, and so I don't have any information as far as, uh, what their viewpoints would be.
Were they aware that there was, were, were they aware that there was going to be an opportunity to be a voting member?
Um, the no outreach was done on my part. Uh, what would have been sent out are the notifications on the boards, and I would have to touch base with, uh, other staff about the opportunities if they had let them know. They would have been aware of the vacancy, uh, on the Board of the Historic Preservation Committee, um, and that's the extent of the knowledge that I would have on that front.
Correct, and I know personally one of them, the alternates as well, and there was no indication for a desire to move up, and there was ample notice for the application process of what was available, um, with no protocol or precedent that an alternate automatically moved up.
I'll, I'll second that, or that's fine by me.
Yeah, that's fine by me too, in that case.
So we have a motion from me and a second, so do, do you want a roll call, Mr. Lindgren?
Uh, indeed, and for a roll call vote on that, I will start with Councilmember Spees.
Yep.
Councilmember Hume.
Aye.
Councilmember Soon.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Nguyen.
Yes.
And Mayor Singh Allen.
Yes. All right, um, so the next appointment, and we had excellent applications here for the Diversity and Inclusion Commission, of which we did hear from some of them. One of the applicants really stood out. Um, it's somebody that I've known actually for a long time, but it's someone even before my interaction, um, with this person. They have a long history of doing inclusive work in our community, before it actually became a catchphrase, that diversity and inclusion is at the heart of, of his leadership. And that gentleman is Dave Nevis, who is a recently retired principal from Elk Grove Elementary School. I'm sure many of you know him. His service to Elk Grove Unified School District spans decades. Um, he has served over thirty years in education, but he has been on the forefront on doing the work. So I think his leadership, his background would be of great benefit to our commission and the work that we do. Um, it, he will provide excellent resources as well to the work that Ms. Reddick is also leading on. So I would recommend, um, Mr. Dave Nevis to be on the Diversity and Inclusion Commission.
I'm looking at, um, two people here that stood out for me, and I, I, you know, I do know Mr. Nevis as well through, as well too, I'm seeing his work, but I'm looking at, I, correct me if I'm wrong, Mahavir, he talks a lot about veterans and veterans of color, and I don't think we have that representation here, our committee, and then also Tina, um, Ms. Tina Voight, Tina Lee Voight. Tina Lee Voight. Yeah, here it is, I'm looking at it. Sorry, I'm just going through the applications. I thought she stood out for me as well too, um, just her experience and, um, what she had to say. I think she would bring some really good experience to the group. She has over twenty-five years of a diverse professional experience in not only public policy, but it seems like she's got several other experiences as well too that I think would be good for the group.
So I'll address Mr. Mahavir first. Um, I definitely think that he's a great candidate. Right now, we have four representatives from the South Asian community that already serve on the Diversity Commission, and so that is one of the reasons that I actually did not move this thing forward, is we already have four, um, in the, in that subgroup. Uh, the others are definitely compelling candidates, but I can tell you, and I think, uh, when we, when we had our, um, you know, sort of the hate crimes that took place in our community, Mr. Nevis was on the forefront. He attended actually every one of those workshops and, um, was an active participant, and brought a lot of resources, um, and brings a lot of respect from a very diverse group of communities, um, not only from the African-American community, the Asian community, the LGBT community. He is a leader on the work that we do. So I, that would be my first preference, but I certainly am open, um, for consideration, um, for some of the others.
Uh, Mayor, I'm, I'm, oh, go ahead, I'm sorry, yeah. Okay, I would just say, I, I, I would entertain this, Mr. Nevis, but I also appreciate, uh, um, Tina Voight, um, I, I, and I understand the rationale between Mahavir as well. But Marilyn May, I also wanted to highlight because, um, when I'm just looking at district representation, um, there, there isn't, um, she's, she's only one in, um, District One, and, and then Tina's in District Three, and so there's only one of those, so that, I would say maybe we should consider some geographical representation, uh, a- absent that, you know, I, I don't know Mr. Nevis, but, you know, I could support any one of those.
So did you second that? I wasn't sure.
Uh, well, I thought we were just talking, but I mean, that, that's fine, I can second it.
Wait, are we just, are we not, are we not discussing and letting all council members talk first?
Yeah, for sure.
Okay.
You can still have the motion and second and still deliberate.
Okay.
But you know, this actually brings up an important point, because we do have so much interest, and I did mention that we do have four commissioners that, um, are all within actually this my ethnic group, so, um, so I don't know if that's something we want to tackle on at a future time, of seeing how long certain, um, commissioners have actually been on the Diversity and Inclusion Commission, just to open up other opportunities for service. So not something today, but something for consideration in the future. Um, would love, uh, let's see, Councilmember Spees?
Sorry, so, uh, Madam Mayor, this is Kevin Spees, can you hear me?
Yes.
All right, so, okay, let me turn on my camera here. All right, so, um, I appreciate, um, um, Councilman Soon's, uh, perspective on, uh, District One and District Three currently only having one representation. Three currently only having one representation, so. Two people I'd like to put forward. First one, Tina Voight, and the reason for her is I've seen the work that she does in the community, I've seen the inspiration that she does. I think there's, there's some, and in all, in all transparency, she worked for my father a long time ago, although she was obviously much younger than my father. But, you know, she does great work in Sacramento, and I think she has additional experience, but she hasn't necessarily highlighted relative to personal insight on diversity, equity, and inclusion. And the second one, of course, you know, it's a tough one because, you know, being military myself, there absolutely should be some representation for, for the military and particularly for military, young military folks. So those are the two, I think both would be fantastic.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Hume?
My popcorn isn't quite done popping, so I'm just enjoying the conversation here. No, I, look, I, every time this comes up, you get so many qualified applicants that you could throw the spaghetti at the wall and end up with a good person to be in the seat. I've known Mr. Nevis for several years, he'd be great. I met with Mahavir, really the young veteran of color perspective makes a compelling case. I'm not familiar with Ms. Voight, but she did have an application that really stood out. And then there was one other, the, the Councilmember Suen brought up, Ms. May, was impressive application as well, so I don't have a real definitive position one way or another on this one.
All right, so I'm hearing there's some agreement on at least a few. We do have an active motion on the floor, so let's see where that goes. I had made the motion for Mr. Dave Nevis with a second from Darren, and then let's see what happens if we have consensus on that one.
And so for the roll call vote for appointing Mr. David Nevis to the Diversity and Inclusion Commission, I will start with Councilmember Spies.
No.
Councilmember Hume.
Um, I'll say no, just to keep the conversation going.
Councilmember Suen?
Well, I seconded it, so I'll say yes.
Vice Mayor Wynn?
I'm gonna say no.
And Mayor Singh Allen?
I'll say yes since I made the motion.
So we're two, three, so that doesn't advance that.
The other consensus I heard was around Tina.
Right, so, oh, so I would be willing to make the motion for Ms. Voight.
Yeah, but she would be my second pick.
Yeah, I second that.
So we have a motion and a second, Mr. Lindgren?
And this is for Ms. Tina Lee Voight to be appointed to the Diversity and Inclusion Commission. I will start that roll call vote with Councilmember Spies.
Yes.
Councilmember Hume?
Yes.
Councilmember Suen?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Wynn?
Yes.
And Mayor Singh Allen?
Yes.
And that will, will pass five oh, and I will appoint Ms. Lee Voight.
All right, thank you, excellent. And, you know, we've seen some amazing applicants, as you see, and as I did mention, we have four within, within actually my, my community. So I will bring this up for a future discussion once I get a little bit more information, but I will ask Mr. Lindgren if you can send us how long the current commissioners have served, just to get an idea, because I feel like some might, might have actually served for maybe eight years or more, so I'm just curious to know if, if that's the case. All right, with that, we're gonna move on to the Planning Commission. So in looking at the Planning Commission, I wanted to really look at this not from the perspective of people, persons, but geographic representation, which is not just council districts, but true areas within Elk Grove. And currently, what I saw in the examination, that we have actually three commissioners that live within literally a mile of each other. We have Commissioner Weiser, we have Commissioner Lynn, and we have Commissioner Shook, that literally live a mile from each other. We have George Murphy, we have Sergio, and then, then Mackenzie that are in the other areas that represent our council's geographic diversity, which is also equally important. So no matter what happens, there's going to be one district that has two representatives. Currently, we do not have representation on the west side. We don't have representation in Stone Lake, Lakeside, Laguna West. We also don't have representation in Old Elk Grove, with the departure of Mr. Maida that left a void there. Mr. Murphy, while is in Mr. Hume's district, he truly represents rural Elk Grove. So making land use planning decisions is really important, and it's important to have geographic representation. So what I would like to do is I'm gonna make a motion for some current commissioners first, and then we will discuss some of the other applicants, if that's okay. But I'm gonna, I would like to reappoint three of our commissioners. It is important to have seniority, it is important to have council separation and representation, but also commitment to serve. And we did hear from three current commissioners who actually did call in, so I thought that that was great. So first of all, I'm prepared to recommend the reappointment of Commissioners Murphy, Weiser, and Robles.
So I, I appreciate what you're saying about geographic diversity, Mayor. I think there's, there's something else that we maybe ought to look at with respect to the Planning Commission, and having been a former Planning Commissioner, you know, there is, there's a lot to be said for freshness of perspective, but also for institutional memory. And so, so I think that, and you're kind of touching on that of not having a wholesale change with the entire commission, so I think that's a good thing. And one of the other things that, if, it can't be a part of this discussion, but maybe we'll want to bring it back, I've resisted it in the past because I think it was being brought forward for political machinations and not necessarily for purity of service, but that is if we, if we do take the time now to look seriously at terms for planning commissioners, not necessarily attached with term limits, but something that says, look, you're going to sign back up for X number of years, so that every so often, the commissioners themselves get to evaluate their own positions and how much gas they have left in the tank and whether or not they want to sign up for a new term, and gives us an opportunity to, because there's just so many people every time that just blow my hair back. But I think now might be the time to take a serious look at that. So I wanted to put that out there. Because I, I would think, first of all, we should probably go individual by individual rather than, than putting forward some sort of a ticket, but I, I think it's important, you know, that you have Mr. Murphy, who's got just a wealth of information going back, and then you have Mr. Robles, who just barely has been appointed onto the commission, so he ought to have an opportunity to serve, so. But I would, I would prefer, if it's okay with you, if we, if we go individual by individual.
Yep, I'm okay with that. So we'll start off with Commissioner Murphy.
Second.
We'll have to reappoint Commissioner Murphy.
Second.
Do we have a motion and a second?
And was that a motion?
Yeah, I mean a motion.
Okay, I think Councilmember Hume seconded.
Yeah.
And if there's no further discussion, I can commence that roll call vote for the appointment of Commissioner George Murphy. That would be starting with, for the roll call vote, Councilmember Spies.
Yeah.
Councilmember Hume?
Aye.
Councilmember Suen?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Wynn?
Yes.
And Mayor Singh Allen?
Yes. Thank you. Next, I will, let's see, I'd like to appoint the only woman on the commission right now and who called in and has shown her due diligence and being prepared, and has been a great commissioner for the last four years, and that would be Commissioner Mackenzie Weiser. So I'll make the motion to approve Mackenzie Weiser. Do we have a second? All right, hearing done. I'm gonna move on to Commissioner Sergio Robles. I would like to move that we reappoint Sergio Robles.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second?
And with that, I will commence the roll call vote, starting with Councilmember Spies.
Yes.
Councilmember Hume?
Aye.
Councilmember Suen?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Wynn?
Yes.
And Mayor Singh Allen?
Yes. All right, so that leaves us three vacancies that we need to fill, and in looking at our list where I talked about we needed geographic representation on the west side, and so Laguna West, Lakeside, and Stone Lake, we have a compelling applicant, and I would like to move her candidacy forward, and that would be Sandra Poole.
So Mayor, I, she was one of the ones that really stood out to me last go around, and so that's why I suggested you take a good look at her. I was happy to see her throw her hat back in the ring, and so I will wholeheartedly second Ms. Poole for the position.
All right, we have a motion and a second.
And I will commence with that roll call vote, starting with Councilmember Spies.
Yes.
Councilmember Hume?
Aye.
Councilmember Suen?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Wynn?
Aye.
And Mayor Singh Allen?
Aye. All right, and then looking at our list, we need representation, well, now we need representation in District Four.
And I'd like to make a motion to move Mr. Seumon Singha to the table. He's, this is his third time applying, he's very active in the community as it is already, and he's got great, a great resume as well, as well as lots of reference letters of support as well to accompany his application.
Are there other for District Four for consideration?
I would motion second on Dr. Seumon.
And I would agree that he's a very compelling candidate, so we have a motion and a second.
And that is for the appointment of Seumon Singha. I will start the roll call vote with Councilmember Spies.
Yes.
Councilmember Hume?
Aye.
Councilmember Suen?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Wynn?
Aye.
And Mayor Singh Allen?
Aye. All right, so finally, representation, again, geographic representation being very important, not just council districts. So Old Elk Grove, we, I would love to see representation there. There are two applicants that have applied. We have Michelle Kyle and Juan Fernandez from District Two.
Madam Mayor, this is nothing to do with district, because I know what you've already said about geographic, but I still feel the need or compelled to mention, these are a couple of names that I had on the list, which was Gus Vina, who's the former city manager. I think he would add a great deal of expertise to, to the council as well, and be able to provide some good input in questioning on matters. And then someone else who caught my attention was Anya Jael. That was also some, but I, I just felt the need to at least express that on this hearing. Thank you.
Mr. Hume?
Yeah, so Madam Mayor, if you're going back to the, to the east side over here, I've met with Michelle Kyle back when she was coming out as a candidate. Oh, hang on, my battery's running low. Hopefully my laptop holds out. And then I've also had a lot of dealings with Mr. Fernandez. He's been very active with a lot of the circulation issues over on the east side and a lot of the Public Works projects happening, and so I would put forward a motion for Juan Fernandez.
I'll second that.
All right, and that would provide us the geographic representation, and not only council districts, but areas, neighborhoods. We have a motion and a second.
With that, I'll turn on my microphone and do the roll call vote for the appointment of Mr. Juan Fernandez, starting with Councilmember Spies.
Yes.
Councilmember Hume?
Aye.
Councilmember Suen?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Wynn?
Aye.
And Mayor Singh Allen?
Aye.
And that would conclude all of the spots that we had open for appointments. I will be getting back to the full city council with those service terms of the Diversity and Inclusion Commission.
That's great, and I'm also, and then if you can also factor in the discussion that Mr. Hume brought up in terms of, you know, long-term vacancies, maybe now is the time to look at it from, for all of the commissions, because I brought it up for the diversity and equity, and Mr. Hume brought it up for Planning Commission, so we can definitely have a conversation about that. All right, well, congratulations to our new appointees. Before I adjourn, I think that's the last item, I want to adjourn on a very somber note. We had two young ladies that died in a tragic car accident a few days ago. I actually knew one of them, Naomi Brown. She was in my son's kindergarten class, and they grew up together. The other was Amara Bush. Just makes you want, you know, realize how precious life is. And my heart and our thoughts and our prayers go out to their families in this horrible, horrible time of grief. Nobody should have to bury their children. It's just not right. But tonight, I would like to adjourn in their memory, and may their memory be a blessing to their family and their friends. But tonight, I'd like to adjourn for Naomi Brown and Amara Bush.
Thank you for that, Mayor, and what an absolute heart-wrenching tragedy, and just, I'm, I'm sure you've been briefed on this, but when we adjourn a meeting and someone's honored, Jason prepares a very nice letter to send to the, to the family or to the individual to let them know, and so.
Thank you.
They'll be getting notification, thank you.
Thank you, there are two GoFundMe pages set up from the families to help with funeral costs. You can see there on many social media platforms, if you send me an email, I can send you links. But thank you, it's a hard time in our community.
Thank you, Mayor.
Have a good night, everyone, be safe.
Good night.